So we've got another minute or two here. A meeting we had, a work session we had last night, and this is really just a housekeeping thing that we needed to do in order to move forward with the hiring of the city manager. If anybody out there has any comments about the attachment, the staff report 2015 City Manager Standards, Criteria and Policy, please contact the manager pro tem or the Human Resources Director, Jim Lefler, and we will incorporate comments as we see fit. With that, I will call to order the regular meeting of the Oregon City Commission for Wednesday, November 4th, 2015. Call the roll, please.
Commissioner Shaw.
Here.
Commissioner Polly.
Here.
Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Commissioner Mengeleberg.
Here.
Mayor Holliday.
Here.
Please stand and join me in the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, we have one proclamation, and as normally, I do not read these as a veteran, and knowing that there are several veterans in the room, I'm going to read this particular proclamation. In observance of Veterans Day, which will be observed on November 11th, 2015, honoring Oregon City employees and citizens who are veterans or currently serving in the military, reserves, or National Guard, whereas the freedoms we enjoy as Americans have been purchased and maintained at a high price throughout our history, and whereas honorable service performed in the defense of our nation is the highest form of citizenship, and whereas 27 of 28 Oregon City employees, which is approximately 20 percent of the city workforce, are veterans or current members of the armed forces, and whereas the city of Oregon City is an employer supporter of the garden reserve, and whereas at the state level approximately 30,700 Oregonians have served in Iraq and Afghanistan since 9/11, and whereas 142 Oregon veterans have made the ultimate sacrifice while serving the Iraq and Afghanistan conflicts, and whereas in conjunction with Veterans Day observed on November 11th, 2015, the city of Oregon City is proud to recognize the men and women who have served to protect our freedom, and whereas our hearts and thoughts go out to the many killed in action or disabled while serving their country, now therefore, I, Daniel Holliday, mayor of the city of Oregon City, do call upon all employees and citizens to observe Veterans Day with appropriate ceremonies in honor of those who have served to preserve the principles of justice, freedom, and democracy. It was hereof, I have here and to set my hand, this fourth day of November 2015. So you can pass that down to Katie. So now, we have citizen comments. Do we have any citizen commenters?
Yeah.
I should probably look at my screen, huh?
Yeah.
Oh, there we go. Why is my screen weird?
I don't know.
Okay, so I can see, I can only see half my screen, but Paul Edgar and Jackie Hammond Williams. Thank you.
I remind you of three minutes.
Thank you, Mayor and city commissioners. I'm here today as a veteran and as somebody who's actively out working to achieve the goal of ending homelessness of veterans. We have a lot of them here. It's a problem, and just recently, this, on the 1st of October, a, this moratorium, this article effort coming out of the United States Intergovernmental Agency. And one of the most important things that it talks about is the community effort, the criteria, the goals. And it, it talks about, you know, when somebody is, their minds might be scrambled, they may have, you know, whatever it may be, but they're living in a pup tent and they don't trust the government. And we're scraping them off the streets, but we don't have a single shelter. And I'm working actively with Clackamas County, and I would like to hope that we could be working directly with the city of Oregon City. We have a wonderful people that are doing an excellent job in Father's Heart, but we, they don't house these people overnight. They might give them a meal, or more than a meal, a sack lunch, but then they go out in the streets and they go out in the corners of the businesses, they're on Main Street, and they're in the neighborhoods, and then our parks, and right now, the Clackamas River Council has now come along and said, "It's a problem even in our waterways," and they're appealing directly to the county and everybody. It's gonna take a concerted effort of all of us, working together, and I'm just one of the people right here in Oregon City, a concerned citizen, a veteran, who would like to look at you guys and say, I would like to see you guys join in actively. We're, one of the efforts right now is identifying using tiny houses or microhouses, and trying to create an encampment area of, a place where we can put them that's affordable. We don't need $200,000 units. We need to come up with something that's reasonable, and as a conservative, I think we can do it, but I would like to be able to find somebody representative appointed by you, Mayor Holliday, to help become part of this effort in a coordinated effort throughout this whole area. And one last thing, I don't see many of you at the Oregon City High School football games, but they're in the playoffs, and they're in the, they're going to have a nice run, and I would like to hope that we're gonna see more of you guys out there at the games supporting Oregon City, because it's a community effort. Thank you.
Thanks, Paul.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. I'm here today as the manager of the Oregon City Farmers Market. My name is Jackie Hammond Williams. I'm also a resident of Oregon City for 25 years, and I'm here at the suggestion of Commissioner Shaw that I give you a quick update on the market. Hopefully, I can keep it real brief to three minutes. So, the summer was a great success. I think that was a lot to do with the great weather that we had. It was hot and dry, but it was gorgeous, and we saw about 45,000 to 50,000 people come through the summer market. We're gonna be holding by the end of this year 39 markets in 2015. We celebrated our 10th year, and we wanted to, myself and the board, thank you all for coming. That was tremendous to see every member of our commission at that birthday celebration. That was really fabulous, and it was noted by our customers, vendors, and volunteers, wow, what a great supportive city we have. So we had 39 markets in 2015. We had 10 event days, which is a lot in a market. We had a seed swap in March. We will be doing that again. That was our fourth or fifth annual one. Pollinator Fair, that was a new event for us, that happened in May. We had the House Holding Fair again, that was the fourth year of doing it, in June. We threw in a new vintage crafty fair in July, which was really fun and successful. Then we had our 10th birthday. The Senior Day is always a really good, successful day. That's in August. Our senior citizens really look forward to that every year. Tomato and apple tastings, both happened in September, and cider pressing for the kids, and Halloween celebrations were held in October. In addition to all that, we had three months of food growing workshops, May, June, and July, where the master gardeners come and teach for 30 minutes a different aspect of food growing to the customers. We provide chairs and shelter for them. Once a month, the master food preservers come and do demos and talk about the importance of safe food preservation. We got a grant from the county, the HEAL grant this year, was used towards our market kitchen, and that was a demo driven by two chefs that came in and took local produce from the market and foods and created different recipes and encouraged our customers to cook more at home. That went every day, in fact, all through the summer except for two days. We had live chickens, baby goats, rabbits, and even had observation beehives, which the kids really loved, seeing the bees around the honey or the honeycomb. Friends of the library came every week, and we invited the 4-H group from the extension and veterans in this year to have booths. We always provide free space for nonprofits, and we welcome them and try and schedule them evenly. So the big news is the winter market starts this Saturday. It's going to be up on the hill at the same site as the summer market, not downtown. We really outgrew that site last year, so the county have welcomed us back for the winter. We'll be running every other week, starting this Saturday, 10 o'clock till 2 o'clock at the Kane Road site. And the benefit of this moving the site is that we are now able to welcome more vendors. So we're really starting off strong with 30 to 35 vendors, which if anyone knows winter farmers markets, is a pretty big winter market. And I'm actually turning away vendors right now. Until I can gauge how many customers are coming, I have to keep the numbers down a little bit, but it'll be much bigger, and we'll still have live music, hot food, and also, I just wanted to talk briefly, oh, I've got the red light.
Go ahead.
Thank you, about two programs. We managed to just about pay our bills, the market's monthly bills, by the vendors that we provide space for at the market, but everything else, all the big expenditures, all the social benefit programs that we have, two of them in particular I'll talk about briefly, that is all funded by grants and donations. And the two that I just want to mention briefly is our SNAP match, so food stamp customers can come to our market, bring their food stamp card, we'll run it, they can buy tokens from us to spend at the market, and then in addition, through grant funding and donations, we're able to provide them free $5 every time they come to buy fresh fruit and vegetables. This is exciting enough, but in January, because we just received a grant, we're gonna be able to offer $10 match. So that's potentially, if they come, you know, through the winter season, twice a month, that's $10, $20 of free food. So I'd really like to get the word out about that, because that's gonna be enormous. And, you know, most of the SNAP customers are single women and seniors. A lot of seniors are on food assistance. The other one I'll just mention briefly is our kids program, and that is called the P.O.P. program, Power of Produce. That's been running several years. It got national, you know, attention, but that provides $2 to every kid between the ages of five and 12, and that, those dollars can be spent in the market to buy only fresh fruits and vegetables or plants to grow their own food. And we get between 1,400 and 1,500 kids, and we give out between 14 and 15, sometimes $16,000 a year to these kids. So you can see, we do a lot of fundraising, a lot of grant writing to keep these programs going, but we are a 501(c)(3), so we are able to accept donations and they're tax deductible. We were voted number one by our customers in the state of Oregon and 27th in the United States, and then the Daily Meal, which is some great online foodie blog thing, you know, they rate everything to do with food in America. We actually got in their top 100 of farmers markets unknown to us. They obviously scouted us, so. But I just would like to say thank you to the city. You're really supportive. Thank you to Public Works, Planning Division, you know, we couldn't hope for a better city to operate a market in, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for the work you do in our community, Jackie.
Thank you.
So, just for me and my fellow commissioners, if we're gonna ask somebody to come, let's coordinate with Ms. Riggs, and we can have them on a presentation rather than being limited to the three minutes of public comment. So the last one here is the ever-present William Gifford.
Mr. Mayor, city commissioners, my name is William Gifford, and I live in Oregon City. Couple of preliminary things. One is I want to give kudos to our OC request program. I really love that program and how fast it responds, and I hope that everybody with a smartphone has that OC request, because it makes, it just streams line that whole issues. What's the second thing? Oh, this morning, at the Chamber of Commerce weekly meeting, was a volunteer, Commissioner Shaw was there, and it was just amazing. How many, how many people do you think were there? Maybe 80 people?
At least 80.
Yeah, it was, it was a, it was a big, it was a big meeting, but the, it just writ large the value of volunteers. This, this city would come to a grinding halt without volunteers, and I just really, really appreciated that. But what I really wanted to talk about was, at the presentation of the Urban Renewal Commission earlier this evening, the presenter mentioned something about the presentation that he gave to the neighborhood association, and I think that that was just almost a throwaway comment, but I want to put some attention on that, because land use issues need to be presented to neighborhood associations, and because we have what I, in my humble opinion, is a rather artificially constructed neighborhood association consisting of a couple of dozen residents, with some of the most important projects in this city being reviewed by them, I've been to some of their meetings, there's maybe two or three people that show up, and yet, for example, the developer of the Cove, to present that multi-multi-million dollar project, his only requirement is to, so the way it used to be is that before there was the Two Rivers Neighborhood Association set up, all of that area from downtown all the way out to the Cove was, was overseen by the entire CIC. So the other 11 neighborhood associations got to review things that happened in that area, because they really affect the whole city. There were some residents in that, in that area that didn't feel that they were being adequately represented because of the, I don't want to use the word gerrymandering, oh, I just did, but the realignment of the boundaries of the South End Neighborhood, the, I'm sorry, the Park Place Neighborhood Association, the McCawford Neighborhood Association, I don't know why those areas couldn't be extended to allow for the residents, but all of those land use issues could be reviewed by the entire CIC. So I would hope that the commission would, would consider the, the whole structure of that Two Rivers Neighborhood Association and its, its efficacy.
Thanks, sir.
Thanks, William.
Anybody else for citizen comment? All right, we'll move on. Adoption of the agenda, everybody okay?
Yes.
All right. So first public hearing is 15-597, ordinance for introduction number 15-1012, Pavilion Part III Development Application for Zone Change, Mr. Conkle.
Mayor, evening, Commissioners. At our last city commission meeting, we presented the land use file for the proposed zone change from R10 to R6 in a 25-lot subdivision located on McCord Road. During that discussion, condition of approval eight specifically came up for discussion. It was addressing the 8-inch water line in McCord Avenue, and, and the requirement for that to be constructed is an off-site public improvement. The commission asked staff as well as the applicant to go back and try to work on that condition to essentially split the cost of that off-site improvement and bring that back if that was something that we could accomplish. So the commission continued the hearing to tonight. So, we did work with the, with the applicant, and Mr. Robinson, Robinson has entered into the record, a memo dated November 3rd concerning the agreement that we came into. He is scheduled to speak, so I'll let him go ahead and talk about the, the letter that he submitted. But essentially, we did come to an agreement on a revised condition of approval number eight that we believe meets what was intended by the commission. I'll go ahead and read it real quick. The existing language, "The applicant shall extend the existing 8-inch water main located in the, to the northwest of the proposed development within McCord Road to the southeastern most boundary of the proposed development frontage along McCord Road. Extension of this 8-inch water main shall include all aperturances such as fire hydrants and water services needed for a complete water system. We've included the following language. The 8-inch water main is a qualified public improvement by resolution, and the applicant may apply for system development charge credits based on 50% of the actual cost of the construction, including engineering, surveying, and inspection costs capped at 15% of the total cost of construction by complying with Oregon City Municipal Code Chapter 13.20 system development charges." So we believe we have addressed the concern to the satisfaction of the city and the applicant, and we believe we did meet the intent of what the city commission was trying to accomplish. You'll also see later on in tonight's hearing, a proposed resolution that would amend the capital improvement project list to include the water line in McCord Road, so that is eligible for those SDC credits. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay. Why don't we have Mr. Robinson come up and say what he's got to say, and then I'll open the public hearing?
Good evening, Mayor Holliday, Members of the Commission. My name is Mike Robinson. I'm here on behalf of the applicant. We appreciate the time that your staff took working with us to find an agreeable solution and condition of approval eight. The applicant's satisfied with it, and we'd urge you to adopt the decision, including the modified condition tonight. Thank you.
Okay. So with that, I'll open the public hearing. Do we have anybody requesting to speak? Ms. Riggs? Last chance, anybody wants to talk about this, then I'll close the public hearing, and I'll entertain a motion.
Let me get back here. I move to approve 15-597, ordinance for introduction number 15-1012, Pavilion Part III Development Application for Zone Change.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Shaw, seconded by Commissioner Smith. Got you by the nose. Is there any discussion?
Yep. Thank you for doing it.
Ordnance number 15-1012, an ordinance of the city of Oregon City amending Title 17 zoning, Chapter 170602 of the official zoning map of the Oregon City Municipal Code by changing the property identified as Clackamas County Map 3-2E-07B-04100, from R10, Single Family Dwelling District, to R6, Single Family Dwelling District, and improving a 25-lot subdivision.
Now, is this a first reading?
Yes, yes.
This is.
Okay, so we'll have to have it back in two weeks?
Correct.
Any further discussion? Call the roll.
Commissioner Shaw.
Aye.
Commissioner Polly.
Aye.
Commissioner Smith.
Aye.
Commissioner Mengeleberg.
Aye.
Mayor Holliday.
Aye. Okay, on we go. So this is the, the pairing of this. Housekeeping, in order to be able to do what we just did, we also have to do this, which is 15-598, Resolution 15-33, modifying the capital facilities improvement plan by adding an additional water infrastructure project. Mr. Lewis.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, you, you pretty much have covered it, but the bottom line is the capital, the city's master plan lists this project. It was just an unfunded project that wasn't in our capital improvement plan, so this resolution amends that, amends that list to include this project, and we've included a dollar, estimated dollar amount, which I know came up in the last meeting as a question. Another thing I thought I'd add to that is there was a question that I think Commissioner Polly, you asked about whether or not we had required an extension of this magnitude, and I didn't go back further than five years, but we did go back five years. This, this request was more than we had asked for, from any development that I had found in the last previous five years. So I think this is a good solution, and I recommend we add it. It's, will help with capacity in the system, and that's a threshold that I see for system development charges, and per the forum, community forum that we had on SDCs, I think adding projects to the list when development is ready to build them makes some sense.
Thank you for looking into that.
Sir.
We have one other person.
Where?
Oh, my. Sorry. No?
Do you, do you want to speak again?
I would like to make the motion.
Go right ahead.
I would like to move adoption of Resolution Number 1533, modifying the capital facilities improvement plan by adding an additional water infrastructure project.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner President Polly, seconded by Commissioner Mengeleberg. Call the roll.
Commissioner Shaw.
Aye.
Commissioner Polly.
Aye.
Commissioner Smith.
Aye.
Commissioner Mengeleberg.
Aye.
Mayor Holliday.
Aye. Thank you. So let the fun begin. So we're off to 7B, 15-600, Resolution Number 1529, Resolution interpreting, interpreting the term designated as a park, as set forth in Chapter 10, Section 43 of the Oregon City Charter. Mr. Lewis.
Can you get a couple of other pad or cover pieces of it? I lost my pad. Thank you.
I might have taken yours.
It's all right.
Katie, do I do anything here, or does it come up? So, thank you, Mayor and Commissioners, first of all, for taking the time. There is a staff report that's been in your commission packet at least a couple of meetings, so I'm not gonna repeat that. In this meeting, we suggested that we provide a PowerPoint, and despite our typical succinct and quick and to-the-point commission reports, looking at Jim Band, because he's always giving us a hard time about that, we're gonna take a few minutes to do this one, and I asked the mayor about this, and it was whether or not we could have 30 minutes, and he said we could have 30 minutes. So I might take that long to go through that.
As long as it doesn't take us as long as we took to drive back from Seattle.
That's true, that's true. That was a very long trip, but it was good to ride with you that entire seven-hour trip.
Yeah.
Oh.
So, I really want to emphasize the purpose of tonight's decision. It's really whether or not it was ever the city's official intent to designate the Public Works upper and lower yards as part of, as an appendage to Waterboard Park. And that's really where I want to stay pretty focused. In order to get there, I've got to go through a fair amount of detail with regard to the history of Waterboard Park, the history of the Operations Center Yard, land use planning history, so there's a lot of things I want to talk about. What this meeting is definitely not about is not about the geology of the site, it's not whether or not it's really the right site, it's not about trees on the site, it's not about those things. It's really about whether or not past leadership made the decision to designate the operations upper and lower yards as a natural park. So, in order to do that, I wanted to open some of the, or shed a little light on some of the mystery of the Waterboard Park, because it's got some history associated with it. So we put a lot of energy into trying to figure that information out. I don't think there's ever been a lot of time spent on figuring out how the Waterboard Park and its specific boundaries came to be, so we're gonna share that information with you tonight. So in order to do that, we're going to go through this outline. I, I would like to thank a variety of staff right off the bat that did a lot of research to try and figure out some of the details of this. It wasn't a clear puzzle to resolve, and there's still some missing pieces, by the way, but we put a lot of energy into that. We've looked at a lot of maps, both electronic and hard copy maps, and I'd like to acknowledge Chris Dunlop, he's our GIS coordinator for the city. We don't ask Chris to come to too many meetings, but...
I don't think I've ever seen it before. I'll take the food for a chance.
Like, you are guests.
Yeah. That was a big deal. Anyway, Chris is, it was, it was great, by the way, William, to hear, I thank you, about some of the tools that are on our web, because Chris is the creator of those tools, and implementer of those tools, and updater of those tools, as long as all the GIS things that we have on our city website, and he's just an outstanding resource for the city, and he's here all the time. I like to think of him as our GIS Iron Man. He's back there with all the, all the different tools and techniques to make sure our system runs very well, so. He looks like an Iron Man, don't you think? All right, so, moving on to the issue at hand. So November 12th, 1970, Mayor Richard Conrad makes a proclamation affirming the vote of the people.
Did we miss a slide there?
Oops.
Thought, go ahead.
You missed that slide.
Yeah.
Okay, that's, that's our...
I just wanted to see the picture.
Okay.
Okay.
So, that's our, on the left is a picture of the upper yard and what we call the big building, and then the Public Works Center, lower yard. You can see part of the upper yard at the upper level there, right about where the power lines are at.
Okay.
So again, 1970, Mayor Richard Conrad makes proclamation affirming the vote of the people, and the charter amendment, which is now Chapter 10 of our charter, is titled which is now Chapter Ten of our charter. It's titled Perks and Natural Beauty. Really, this provision of the charter, there's four sections under this charter, chapter. Section forty talks about the purpose, which is really to preserve our parks. And so I just wanted to include that so that you'd have that. That picture on the right is Waterboard Park up at the top of the trailhead. Section forty-one doesn't necessarily apply too much to this topic, but it's an important section, and I didn't want to exclude it. So I'm not going to spend much time on it unless we kind of come to the conclusion that, yes, the past leadership did make the determination that upper and lower yards should become an appendage to Waterboard Park. If that's the case, then we need to come back to this section of the charter. So section forty-two is kind of the meat of what is Waterboard Park and what is not Waterboard Park. So first of all, the charter designates Waterboard Park as a natural park, and there's a property description. So what's highlighted in red is what was pretty much described in, or what has been described for Waterboard Park. And so it includes several properties. And I, yeah, so basically, the thing that I found interesting about the charter, and I'll show you some of that history, is that we didn't actually own all the land that was designated as Waterboard Park in nineteen seventy. So there were a few pieces that were added after the fact. So I thought it was pretty bold at the time for the city commission to take that to the voters and designate park land that they didn't necessarily have control over.
So where is the lookout in this picture?
So I don't have, you're going to have to turn around, but it's right here at Creed Street, at the end of Creed Street.
Oh, okay.
So this is the armory building, the upper building, and then center. And then, you know, from Creed Street, you can traverse what used to be John Adams, you know, that came down and through the park.
So this picture was taken after the road was taken out?
Yes. Well, the road's not been taken out. It's just not really drivable anymore.
And so this picture was taken from what document?
Actually, this is an aerial photograph probably from our most recent-
Two thousand thirteen aerial photo of the current boundary.
Yep. So all these graphics that we're going to show you, unless they look historic, are graphics that Chris has generated for this presentation from our mapping.
So that's an aerial or a satellite?
It's an aerial.
Okay.
Also in section forty-two is the rest of the text, which is the exception to what wasn't included in Waterboard Park. So they describe a line that's bound by John Adams Street, and so the line that has been shown here in the shaded area is the remnant parcel that's left. And we're going to talk a little bit more about, it looks kind of square and includes property even beyond the Operations Center, and we're going to talk a little bit about that original piece of property. But this is the line that now differentiates between Waterboard Park and the armory site or the upper and lower yards.
So why does this shading extend to the west side of center?
So you're jumping ahead of me, but I'll get to that.
Okay.
Okay. What I think is crystal clear about this section of the charter is that, at least in nineteen seventy, there was no question whether or not the armory site or the upper and lower yards were part of Waterboard Park. There's that viewpoint on the left from Creed Street, the promenade, and then another pathway picture in Waterboard Park. So I have handed out some paper handouts of this, because it's a little easier for you to probably read. Hopefully, the audience can still read this. It's got a lot of information on it. So the first page, both of them, both pages look similar, and I printed them one-sided for a reason. I wanted you to look at the first page first. So this one should be titled Major Events Timeline. Public Works Operations Upper Yard and Waterboard Park Major Events Timeline. So first of all, I want to emphasize the scales. On the upper scale, the scale above the orange line, these are events that kind of happened that weren't necessarily land purchases, but they were, they were things that we found in the record that represent things that either happened in Waterboard Park or happened to the upper and lower yard of the Operations Center. And then down below, and you can see the little diamonds at the end of these, these are actually land, this is more of the land acquisition history. So I'm going to talk about this in detail, but I'm also going to go through it real quick, just for, make sure we cover all of it. So in nineteen ten, we actually acquired some land in Waterboard Park, and it also included the upper and lower yards and some of those appendages that you were asking about, Mayor, across the street from the, or nineteen twenty-three. The city actually assumed the rights and the powers and the duties of the Water Commission in nineteen twenty-three. So the original land sale was conveyed to the Water Commission, not to the City of Oregon City. A few things happened. Nineteen twenty-five, we were at the water, the waterworks kinds of activities were already happening at the lower yard. Nineteen thirty-six, we'd cleared the upper yard. Nineteen thirty-eight, we know sometime in that frame, the Operations Building itself was established. Nineteen thirty-nine, there was a property acquisition for Waterboard Park. Back to the top, the lower yard expanded, you know, use. Canary was present. And that's not the lower yard, the Canary was present. I think that's the upper yard. The upper yard building was built in nineteen forty-four. We gave the land for-
When we say the big building, are you talking about the armory?
Yeah, the, no, no, I'm talking about the big building that was in the first picture that we used for storage and materials and things.
Right, right. So that's the one that's east west of the armory building?
Right.
Okay.
Right. Nineteen forty-nine, the city essentially donated the land to the state. So we've got good documentation of that sale. And then there was some other uses. The vocational school used the armory and some of our bigger buildings for some coursework for like shop usage and mechanics, those kind of things. Then the next-
But it was actually active as an armory for a couple of decades, anyway.
The, oh, the armory, yeah, the armory was very active as well. I guess I should expand upon that where I was talking about the vocational. They used some of the armory, but the uses that I was thinking of are more in the, in the big building and some of the other buildings up there. They actually occupied those for classes and for, you know, how to fix dents and bodywork.
But we actually staged vehicles, and there was a regular National Guard unit that operated out of the armory.
Exactly. In fact, you know, we hope at some point in time to honor that with the construction of the Operations Center. So the next major event is the nineteen seventy charter amendment, which is a very big deal. And then there was several property acquisitions that happened after that. Nineteen seventy-four, there was more Waterboard Park property acquired. Same with nineteen seventy-six. City acquired a parking lot across the street. Two thousand six, we-
When you say across, you're talking of the parking lot across Center Street, right?
Across Center Street. I'll show you that. In two thousand six, we acquired a piece of property that's kind of going to be hard to explain, so just know that I'll share that piece of information with you in a graphic, but we bought a piece of property up on what's known as First Street. It's really kind of up by the, you've heard a lot about the rock outcrop and the Oak Grove. That, up there, we bought a house and demoed that house, and that's part of our property as well. And then in two thousand seven, we acquired the Cameron Building. And here recently, this commission approved the acquisition of three oh six off Center Street, so.
Where's the Cameron Building?
Cameron Building is that barrel building that sits right next to Operations, and I'll show it to you. Yeah, on Center Street.
Oh, okay, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. So again, just trying to put graphics with dates and detail. So nineteen ten, again, it was, this piece of property was purchased for twenty-five hundred dollars from my recollect, and I know I have that in my notes somewhere, but-
How do you do?
Oh, okay, sorry.
On the screen. On the screen. We're back to the screen now, so you can keep that paper copy and refer to it as much as you'd like. But again, this map is a map that Chris has created. He looked at the deed information to come up with this property description. It's interesting that this is one tax lot, even though it's split in two pieces. So, and it included, again, this kind of squared-off piece up on more of the top of the, so again, I'm going to point using this. So it's interesting how it goes up here, includes some private properties, came across, includes some more private properties over here. So it was a, that was, again, something the city purchased for twenty-five hundred dollars back then.
And some of those paths were made at that point in time?
I don't, I believe the road was there, but I, you know, that's the only path. Well, I, you know, there is another path that goes kind of this way down towards Quarry Street. I guess I'm not sure the existence of that path, the history of that path.
Okay.
I'm trying to think if there's anything else on this piece that I wanted to share. I think I'll just move on to the next slide. So we're showing a nineteen thirty-nine acquisition where we acquired this triangular piece here. It's interesting that that piece is part of, it was a rock source for the city at that time. In fact, the acquisition resolution includes some language. It says, "And for the, for other purposes in that it is necessary to acquire said property for rock thereon to be used in improvement of the cities generally where rock is needed, and particularly for the use in roads and streets." I just found that interesting. I don't know a lot of the history of that, but I've walked that area. If you've walked that area, it's kind of the area that's off the roadway, and there's a lot of geologic, it's kind of like a geologic wonder under there or over there. So I imagine, back then, they used to use a lot of dynamite to, you know, to core that rock out of there. My sense is that was a pretty active area at one point in time, based on what's-
Hence Quarry Street?
Hence Quarry Street. I mean, we know of other quarry activities. We saw some indication of that in some of the mapping in this area as well, but, so that's kind of right in that area. And yeah, Quarry Street sits over here. This triangular area, though, is unique in that there's some significant boulders over there, and I suspect there was some pretty impressive hammering of the neighborhood when they were doing that kind of blasting. So in nineteen forty-nine, the state, again, we sold, I think for a dollar, some property to the armory, and that was well-described in the property deed, or sale deed for that particular piece of property. And so that still remains armory property, and I think until the state either decides to do something different with it, it'll remain armory property.
So the Oregon Military Department still owns that?
That's right.
Okay.
They still own that piece of property. So this is back to the charter, and I just really kind of want to point out that at the time of the charter in nineteen seventy, so I'm trying to follow the timeline that you have in front of you. They designated this area as Waterboard Park, but the orange parcels weren't owned by the city. They were owned by the county at that time. And I think the other thing I wanted to point out in this slide, this area totals up to twenty-one point four acres. And I think that acreage is important, because in documents that I'll be talking about in a little bit, there was, the neighborhood has brought forth the Parks Master Plans, and most of the Parks Master Plans list Waterboard Park as nineteen point three acres. And I just think that we're seeing lots of indications that there was some mistakes associated with Waterboard Park and its acreage. And so just to clarify, this is actually twenty-one point four acres.
So I have a quick question. So this map from nineteen sixty-nine, is it the first one that showed all the different tax lots? Because the ones before were kind of hard to read the boundaries and that type of thing. Was this the first time that the tax lots were specified?
Actually, no. The earlier ones, especially that big square area, I was following the actual source plat map, and it, it, there was a property line that cut down. It's kind of hard to show.
Sorry. Let me go back. Push the wrong. Getting ahead of myself here. There we go. So there was a-
There was a property line that cuts through where John is just showing there, basically John Adams Street. And that, I don't know if you can see it on this one.
Might be right there.
Yeah. I actually probably removed that, because I was just trying to show the, in this case, what was owned by the city. But it did, I did match the boundary. The legal description that they provide in the original plat matches very closely to the existing tax lot boundary. There's a shift of a few feet just as control changes with survey control. But all the lines were defined by legal descriptions.
Thank you.
Okay, so nineteen seventy-four, again, following that timeline, we acquired two point three acres of property. This was something that the county gave us. We didn't find purchase records of that. It was just provided to the city. Nineteen seventy-six, Clackamas County also transfers another four point seven acres of property to Oregon City. So that's the kind of history of most of the acquisition associated with Waterboard Park.
Okay.
I'm chipping up myself here. So again, in two thousand four, a lot of this had, I remember this distinctly, because I was new with the city at the time, but I was asked to hire a surveyor to obtain a better survey or a detailed survey of the area that would help establish this line right here. So if you turn around again, I'm sorry, I'm apologizing for that. But that line right there, this was one tax lot at one point in time. And the armory had been sold, so we knew the armory parcel from its property description. And we also knew what the charter described as, as this line right through here. So in two thousand four, we were working on the master plan at that time. We had just started the facility plan, or were actually just finishing up a facility plan for the operations site. And it was, at that time, made clear to me that we needed a better boundary survey of what we actually owned for future development of an operations center. So that's where this map came from. And as you can see, it includes, this is that Cameron Building that you have. So it includes all of our frontage, the upper and lower yards, and there's the differentiation. We also acquired this little piece right here and all. I'll show you that in another slide.
Who's the surveyor?
Repetto and Associates. That's the right. Okay, so land acquisitions for the Operations Center, I'm going to show you in one slide. It's a little easier to show. Nineteen ninety-eight, we acquired the parking lot, which is across the street from Operations right here. We already apparently own this one. We don't find any transaction history on that particular piece, but we know we own that piece. I think it had some, if you remember those areas that you were talking about, Dan, that, again, if you turn around for me for just a second, I want to show you. So this used to-
My can do this?
That might help if we did, but you have to control that, or can I? Thanks.
Yeah, there you go.
Okay, very good. So it's a hand, not a pointer, but, you know, this, the original purchase from nineteen ten, really, kind of came up and crossed with this line right here and squared off, cut off this corner property, came down here and included portions of these properties in this parcel, right? So it's interesting that we at one point in time owned that, but yet again, in nineteen ninety-eight, we bought it. So I suspect what happened was there may have been some land trading. We don't find that kind of history, but we know that we own this piece. That line used to go through portion of the Cameron Building. Didn't include this building at all, but, you know, I don't know. These pieces up here are now privately owned, so we got a little gap right there. We can't, I'm not quite sure how to best explain that.
We didn't, those weren't as relevant to what we're talking about with the park versus the operations.
Yeah. So we completed a two thousand five Oregon City Public Works Facilities Plan, which talked about, you know, further development at the site. First Street, adjacent to the upper yard, that's that little piece right there. It actually sits on top of the bluff, so it's in what's kind of that grove of oak trees up on top. It had a house on it, and we've since demolished that. And then we bought the Cameron Building, which is, again, the building with kind of the barrel rooftop on it that sits right next to us. We use that for storage of some of our equipment inside. And then more recently, we just bought this piece right here as well. And then, I guess I forgot to mention, we do have an approved Oregon City Public Works Site Master Plan that was approved by the Planning Commission and the City Commission. Works Site Master Plan that was approved by the Planning Commission and the City Commission.
And that's what we're revisiting now?
Tonight's this-
No, not tonight. I mean, that's what we hired the-
Right.
The $90,000 to revisit and-
Yes.
Okay.
Again, some more pictures. These are mostly the buildings, the historic buildings, uh, up on the upper yard.
So that building on the left was never used by the, that was never part of the Armory property was never used by the military?
That's correct.
Okay.
But it was used by the vocational school.
All right.
And it's named the cannery for a reason. I think it had those kind of uses as well. Okay, so again, now, now you're allowed to flip to the next page, which is more of the land use zoning timeline. And so, uh, just a little easier reading in front of you there. Um, again, I want to go over the events here, so I'm going to use the pointer so you can see this on the screen if you choose, but we had, uh, a lot of zoning kinds of things that confirmed that it was all, the, that the Waterboard Park was zoned as residential. Uh, there's a 1970 charter amendment, so we've just shown that again. There are some, um, some land use, uh, these are not land use maps, they're, uh, comprehensive plan maps that designate the park as quasi, uh, designate the upper yard as quasi-public and then another one in 1992. We have those maps, pretty much all these maps are either here and in one form or another. We've, we've, Chris has taken pictures of these maps and we're going to show you some excerpts from those so that we don't have to have you trying to look at, uh, very small maps. Uh, and, and so that's, that's in the presentation as we're coming forward. Want to acknowledge these documents because this is, these are documents that the neighborhood has brought before the City Commission as evidence that the, um, class, past leadership of Oregon City made, uh, determination by adoption of this master plan and this master plan and by adoption of this June 2004 comp plan, each of those documents had maps in them. And, uh, there, so there's a map in each of these documents and, uh, each of those maps shows the operation center is designation park. And so we want, we're going to get deep into that as well. But those are the years that those were passed and I just want to, you know, cover those. Again, this June 2004 comp plan, we're going to talk about it as well in detail. It then show you some documentation that says, yes, it was adopted in June 2004, but there was lots of evidence that suggests that there was plans to update that map, uh, and those maps and the comprehensive plan and to do that over a short period of time. And that's why there's a second adoption of that comprehensive plan in 2004, in December of 2004. Of course, December of 2005, we adopted the facilities master plan and 2010, the City Commission and the Planning Commission adopted the, uh, 2010 Oregon City Public Works Master Plan. Just, or, yeah, okay. So these are the zoning maps and, uh, I don't know that there's a lot to be said about these other than it's kind of a confirmation that this whole area, Waterboard Park, uh, keep in mind, the zoning maps are secondary to the comprehensive plan, um, but they're another set of maps and we just wanted to kind of make sure you were fully understanding of all these historic maps that we have. The dates of these maps is up here, so, uh, Chris has taken a picture of the 1965, 1973, 1977, and 1980 zoning maps. And they all show the, the park and the operation center as well as the Armory zoned as either R2 until 1981, when they were zoned as R6. Okay?
So is the operation center a conditional use?
Um, not under its current zone.
But back then, would it have been?
Probably would have been non-conforming usage.
An existing non-conforming use. Okay, thanks.
Bill. So again, these maps are on the wall, but, um, they've been referenced as, um, as more justification as to how this puzzle plays out in terms of land use. But, um, again, we're showing the Waterboard Park as park in 1980 and the Armory site and the upper and lower yards as quasi-public. And then again, in 1997, um, the, um, Waterboard Park is designated park and so it's, and the, uh, same thing. So, um, Armory and the upper and lower yard quasi-park at that time as well.
Quasi-public.
Quasi-public, sorry. Quasi, did I say quasi-park?
Yes, you did.
Shame on me. Okay. Uh, all right, so, um, this map is actually something that, um, our Iron Man over here worked on and remembered and had some, uh, digital files of kind of some of the work that went into the comprehensive plan. So I've, I've labeled this one, um, this is a comprehensive plan update map. It was from August 18th, 2003 and it was a working map. And, um, it just shows, you know, the various, um, land use designations in color, so each of the colors meant something. And the yellow blocks or the yellow leaders, if you will, uh, were specific to the lot that they're pointing to. So Chris and the, the planning group was working, uh, I'm sure as hard as they could to get, uh, the mapping right and get agreement on, you know, what needed to change and what, you know, what the different designations should have been in the comprehensive plan. And so, uh, I don't know, is there anything else you want to add to that?
The planning department basically came up with the changes, um, proposed changes. I then mapped them out with these call-out boxes and I think from there it went to public comment or review. Uh, I'm not quite sure of the planning process at that point.
I'm showing these working maps because they tell a story about how we got to the different, um, and there was, there was a lot of discussion at the commission level about these details and I, I want to show you more of that. So I'm just trying to show a trend here of, uh, mapping that was both, you know, staff managed, but, um, had a lot of commission oversight at the time.
So just to let you know, you've already run out of time.
All right. That's because you're asking questions.
Oh.
Good questions, though. They're great questions and definitely worth the time. Um, okay, so dang, okay, I'm way behind then. Um, so here's another map that shows, the, the reason why I want to show this is because, uh, you know, at this, at this particular iteration of the working map, again, the operation center, I'm going to use my pointer here, is, uh, the same color as Waterboard Park, quasi-public for the Armory. These three lots, which weren't either at the time, were also shown as quasi-parks. So there was-
Quasi-public.
Or quasi-public. And so, um, you know, that, to, to me, that's just another, uh, indication that things were changing. There was uncertainty on, on how, you know, what the final map should look like.
So back up one second, John.
Okay.
So that's the first time that I've seen that piece, the upper and lower yards in green.
That's right.
And that's 2004.
Yes.
Okay.
There was, generally with the, um, and I don't want to put words in the planning department's mouth, but, um, with tax lots, there was, um, an effort to not create split comprehensive, um, land uses on a given tax lot. And I can't remember this one in particular, but I would hazard that that was changed color in order to make the single tax lot all of the same comprehensive line. Can't say for sure, but that's just, that's what the thought process was as we were going through this.
And I think that aligns with the fact that we were, uh, about the same time talking about, we need to establish this property line that differentiates the upper and lower yard from the rest of Waterboard Park so that we could then kind of make that distinction.
Because even though there's that thick black line, um, that is not a tax lot line. That was then fixed during the lot line adjustment, but at this point, it was not a separate tax lot.
Okay.
So, um, again, this is what was adopted in the 2004 comp plan map. And I think one of the key points that the neighborhood is making that it was adopted in the comp plan map and since it was adopted in the comp plan map, it shall be. And I think, um, despite the fact that it's in the comp plan map, I think that they were, it was a work in progress and we were able to find from City Commission meeting minutes, uh, several kind of indications that the commission was actively talking about planning map changes. And then, so I'm going to move on to the next map, which is another working map, which is dated October 27th, 2014. Again-
24, 2004.
2004, again, uh, noting that the change went from, I think at this point in time, we'd seen the survey and we, uh, broke the, the public works upper and lower yards from the rest of the remnant, or rest of the parcel. So that line was at that point established. They were able to determine this was quasi-public and they also fixed some other problems with these lots that had been designated.
So the very upper point of that triangle is the lot we just bought? Right there?
Right there.
Yes.
Yes.
So when, when you're saying working map, is that the map that was adopted into the comp plan? It wasn't?
No.
It's just a preliminary working map?
This is, these are files that Chris had that were specifically dated and show these little blocks of changes. So anything that was, that has this little, those little yellow boxes on it was a working map. What was adopted, um, doesn't have those on it, so that's the 2004.
So if, if we look at these, you know, go back to that slide. So if we look at these comments, it's clear that they wanted to adopt the comp plan, but there were obviously things that, that were going to need cleaned up and changed and therefore they said, we're going to do that, but we're also, you know, it's a good plan and one can continue to undergo review. So-
Right. And I've got, um, so let's see, we're October 27th. So the other thing I wanted to say about this is there's, there's, uh, an excerpt that I'm going to read to you from an ordinance that, uh, adopted this comp plan. So the Oregon City Planning Commission shall hold a meeting on Monday, August 23rd to undertake testimony and evidence on the comprehensive plan and plan map as well as the zoning code and zoning map possibly, and possible revisions or refinements to the documents adopted in this ordinance. So that, that came out of that, um, adoption ordinance as well. And then in, um, November of 2004, we found a staff report that says, "On November 3rd, the City Commission held a public hearing and took testimony concerning the proposed amendments to the comprehensive plan text map, zoning map and zoning code. After completion of the public hearing and deliberations, the commission voted 5-0 to approve the first reading of ordinance number blah, blah, blah. On October 18th, the Commission and Planning Commission held a joint work session to review the Planning Commission's recommendations amendments identified as amendments to the Oregon City Comprehensive Plan, Plan Map, Municipal Code, and Zoning Code. Version four and staff was directed to make minor changes to the comprehensive plan text and amend zoning code in preparation for the number three, 2004 City Commission hearing. Changes that were made are outlined in the October 27th memorandum included in attachment. On October 11th, 2004, the Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of the amendments to the Oregon City Comprehensive Plan, Comprehensive Plan Map, Municipal Code, and Zoning Map." So I guess the, the point of that was this, the other thing we've heard is that staff were messing with these maps and, and, um, that's why they changed. I, I wanted to establish that there was, uh, record of, of, um, direction to make those adjustments and then to adopt those adjustments. And that's what we ended up with in December of 2004. So we've got an adopted comp, comprehensive plan map that shows, um, the Armory and the Public Works upper and lower yard as quasi-public and not part of Waterboard Park. All right, I'm going to quit that one and move on. I know I'm long. So, um, again, 1991, 1999, 2008 Parks Master Plans. You know, I don't want to discount these because there was a lot of staff hours and a lot of volunteer hours and, and as a result of that, we've got a best, much better community today because of these plans. But none of these plans spent any time or much time at all on Waterboard Park or discussion of Waterboard Park or the discussion of what, you know, conversion of, of, uh, the upper and lower yards to something different. And I think that's kind of the, the key. So I'll, I'll get to that and try to describe that. So the 1991, 191, 1991 Parks Master Plan included this map that's shown on the left and that's an excerpt from it. It's, uh, kind of hard to read and we've got a better, um, depiction of that in the next, in the next map or in the next slide. But a couple of things out of this one. Again, the plan didn't spend much energy on Waterboard Park and this is pretty much the extent of what was included there. There was a reference to the Waterboard Park as 19.3 acres. It's that, the actual area that's shown is not quite 19.3 acres. And it doesn't include, um, all of what comprised Waterboard Park. Uh, really the, the note there talks a fair amount about trails and, or not, does not a fair amount, it talks a little bit about trails and picnic facilities, but nothing about taking over that property and, um, considering that property for some kind of conversion. This silhouette here on the right represents the same depiction that's in the map on the left, it's just a little bit more clearer. Again, the area that's, that, uh, that's shown here, actually represented here, so, yeah, the table indicates 19.3 acres. What we know to actually make up Waterboard Park is something more than that, it's 21.58 acres. This map, uh, use this again. So we know based on the timelines that this piece of property was acquired in 1939, this piece of property was acquired in 1974. We know that this was sold to the state in-
49.
1949. And we know that this wasn't really designated at that time as park. So we just see this map having some-
Well, what is the designation of the, of the upper and lower yards in 91? I can't read that, so.
That's just acreage right there. We haven't, we're not showing a designation, but in, uh, 1991, it would be quasi-public.
Why is it, why is it included in the same shading?
That's a question. That's, that's our question. It's a mistake. It's a mistake in the 1991 map.
Okay.
Just like these others are mistakes in the 1991 map. And the reason, you know-
So you're saying these, these other two pieces should have been shaded and they weren't?
They weren't. And I, I, you know, the, 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 to me, the reason is because these, the, this master plan, the 1990, actually, the three plans didn't spend any time focused on Waterboard Park. They were focused on all the other things that happens across the city for parks. Waterboard Park, most people know sits up on the hill up there and they know that it's a big area. They don't know the details of where the property lines are, they, you know, and I think that was true of the volunteers and the commission at the time. They weren't, there was, first of all, there was nothing in the Parks Master Plan that really was addressing Waterboard Park.
When was Chapman done?
Oh, don't. You don't know, do you? I don't know the date.
It was, I believe it was opened in about 1983.
Oh.
Approximate. I, I think it might be 83.
So in the 91 master plan, they were looking at what other things? Obviously the master plan was moving forward to building new stuff, right? So just a quick idea, what other parks were we looking at at that time?
In 91?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, it would have been looking at just the future growth areas. Uh, I know that, that moving into the 99 master plan, and John may be getting into some of this, but you know, we were looking at the Wesley Lynn property acquisitions and, and some of the other additional things, the, the Glen Oak site that we have now and some of those types of things. So I think we were focused on more on kind of the, the future growth.
Right, okay.
The waterfront parks, you know, there was a lot of discussion and it was good work. It was just, we got a map here and the question that I see at this time is, does this one map in a 1991 master plan drive the decision about what should happen to the Armory site? And that we didn't really even, that we don't even own and, uh, the public works site?
Well, we can look at, back when I was on the City Commission, we did a waterfront master plan, right? Spent quarter of a million dollars on a waterfront master plan. And if we look at what's happening today at the Cove, that resembles not an iota of what we did in the waterfront master plan. Go ahead, John.
So this one, um, is an excerpt from the 1999 Parks Master Plan. Similar kinds of differences. This does show a couple, a couple of the pieces that were owned at the time, um, but it also shows the Armory, which was clearly not the city's and, uh, not the intent of the city's. I've never heard the intent of the city's to do something different with the Armory. But, um, and the acreages are off. So this particular map shows 28.15 acres of land shown. In fact, it's- In fact, it's, we know that it's nineteen point three acres for Waterboard Park.
So is the left side of this, is this all part of the, is this entire slide part of the plan?
Yes.
So it lists these?
Yes.
But it shows Public Works upper and lower yards.
Oh, I'm sorry. This is an excerpt, this here page is from the master plan. These are our textual things that we added to the slide. Is that what you're asking?
Okay.
Yeah, we're just emphasizing those differences that we think, meaning that again, great work that was done in the nineteen ninety nine Parks Master Plan, lots of program suggestions through the Parks Master Plan, but there was no discussion about Waterboard Park. And, you know, the other thing that I wanted to mention besides, you know, boundaries, those kind of things, it's my opinion, if the city would have been serious about expanding a park and taking over the operations yard, we would have expected to see some discussion about how that was going to happen, the phasing of that, the cost of that. There's nothing in the record to show any kind of conversation about the Parks Master Plan though.
And where were you going to put operations?
Nothing that showed any kind of phasing and how the transition might work in those plans. So again, I think that this was, these were maps where, and since there wasn't a lot of focus on Waterboard Park in this master plan, there wasn't a lot of attention spent on this parcel layout. That's an opinion, but that's where I think it's at. I also checked with the finance department and they looked back twelve years to find out, was there any financial indication that the city was thinking something different with regard to Waterboard Park? And then we've got, I did find a nineteen ninety eight and two thousand and three facilities capital improvement plan, which has got a long list of city capital improvements that were planned and what the finance, nothing in that document to indicate that there was any kind of a change or improvement plan to convert the upper and lower yard and the Armory Site into a natural park.
Or was there any indication that any of the previous commissions had made any indication that they wanted to move Public Works or purchase property for Public Works somewhere else?
No, sir.
So you couldn't assume that if we were planning on making that a park, we would, they would have been, had a plan or some theory in place where Public Works is going to go?
I think so.
Okay.
This is really difficult to read, but really, these are just an ordinance and a notice that, this is the right way. This is the way the charter suggests parks should be designated. So this one's John Storm Park. It's an example of how I believe that the city commission should make parks designations. And it's consistent with what the charter's asking. So we've been inconsistent in the way we've done that, but I think it's important for you to know that that's the way the charter suggested. I think it says it may be done this way. But given our enforcement of the charter, it seems like those are pretty important actions and probably should be at least being covered by a specific ordinance and a specific map that's attached to that.
Well, and we can see what happens when we don't do things with procedure from the past. You know, I mean, you know, we've been around since eighteen forty four. You know, back then, record keeping was, you know, not as technologically capable as we are today. And so through the years, you know, nineteen thirties to the nineteen fifties or sixties, technologically changed quite a bit. And then from sixty five or seventy on to where we are now, it's dramatically changed. So we can look at a lot of different things that we couldn't look at before.
I agree. I agree. So my conclusions are Waterboard Park includes twenty one point four acres of natural area. And that's what we've shown in this map. Waterboard Park excludes four point five six acres of Public Works yard area and two point one nine acres of the Armory property. With regard to history, past use of the property and property acquisitions favor the current uses. Parks master planning does not support a consequential change like designating Public Works upper yard and lower yards an appendage to Waterboard Park. Land use planning, same thing. Resolution fifteen twenty nine, which is before you tonight, is fittingly affirms that the record of land acquisitions, current land uses and past land uses, decisions to be consistent with maintaining Waterboard Park as is and the operations upper and lower yards for ongoing Public Works yards. Sorry that took so long.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Thank you, John.
I just, you know, I think this history is vitally important and there's a lot of work done to put that together. But at the end of the day, the critical question for the commission is, you know, I think you start, the first question you've got to answer is, are the comprehensive plan maps and the Parks and Rec Master Plan, looking at the city as a whole, the type of documents that the city uses to designate a charter park affording it the highest protection in the city? And that's really what you need to focus on, I think. You know, I think you understand that, but just want to make sure that's the key issue.
I think before we ask any further questions, we should have the, we have two speakers? So who motioned what?
Someone just.
I must have hit it by accident. So we'll take Jesse Buss, it's James Nacida. You were first in line. Before you get started, though, I want to say that this document that you sent to us at five thirty this afternoon, that's, I don't know, fifty, sixty pages long?
Seventy one.
Huh?
Seventy one.
Yeah. You know, you guys have been obviously looking at this for quite a while, so to give us seventy pages of, you know, document at five thirty when we're going to take this at, you know, seven thirty is not a real reasonable thing to even expect that I would even look at it.
Well, I wouldn't expect that folks would actually look at it before tonight's hearing. But part of that letter is requesting a continuance of your vote on the resolution. And since we didn't know if you were going to continue it or not, we needed to get things in the record and that was the way to do it.
Just a copy of what you already have.
That's what that is.
All right. So are you officially representing the Othel Neighborhood Association?
I am officially representing the Othel Neighborhood Association. And they had forty eight minutes on the presentation. Normally, we'd only get five for the neighborhood. Could we get twenty?
The rules are the rules. So Neighborhood Association gets five minutes, right?
So this isn't a public hearing, but it's up to the mayor to distinguish that or the commission.
You control and can place reasonable time and limits on presentations.
I'm looking for some guidance here. I would typically stand by the rules that the commission has in place, which would be, we would give the Neighborhood Association five minutes. Does anybody see any reason to change that?
I'd like clarification on some of these documents that we did not have a chance to read. If it takes a couple more minutes than five minutes, I would be willing to do that. We need to.
We'll give you ten minutes.
Thank you, Mayor. All right. Again, the reason I came to you so late today was because you didn't have access to this PowerPoint presentation until this afternoon. And I understand that's just a reality of preparation, but there's been six weeks of research time from staff since the neighborhood last submitted their letter. And one afternoon to prepare what I prepared and gave you, so best I could do and as quickly as I could do it. So continuance would be great because there's far too much content in the PowerPoint presentation to respond to in the letter or right now. I want to echo Mr. Kibizman's statement that really was before the commission right now, is not do we want to designate this area as park, but has that been done before? And it's a very narrow question. It only had to have happened once. The designation happened once. So while the history of Waterboard Park as a whole is very interesting and I'm very interested in it, I did a lot of this research myself, too. And it is complicated. A lot of it's irrelevant to the very narrow question. And that question is, in fact, whether the park has been designated, the lower park. I just want to clarify quickly that there's, everyone agrees that the original nineteen seventy charter amendments excludes what the neighborhood's calling the lower Waterboard Park. That's not an issue. The only issue is what happened after that. And what I have here is a blown up version of the nineteen ninety one Parks Master Plan map that you already heard about, that was adopted by ordinance. And this is a clear map, I believe, that shows Waterboard Park, including upper yard slash lower Waterboard Park, being included as park. Now, you've already seen that tonight. But I want to point out that while there's no discussion in the text of the nineteen ninety one master plan, Parks Master Plan, regarding absorbing this into Waterboard Park, it's clear there need be no discussion. Neither is there any discussion regarding the other parks and their legal boundaries for the most part. Most parks have a little blurb just like that. You can see here in the legend that it says existing park in the black, which is what all of that is. And it says proposed acquisition in the shaded gray. So you do have consideration in this master plan, proposed expansion of parks elsewhere. This wasn't it. This is considered already park. Same thing happened in nineteen ninety nine, albeit with slightly larger boundaries, as explained by Mr. Lewis. One or two of the tax parcels was excluded from nineteen ninety one. But that's irrelevant. The fact is, what is marked as park was marked as park. The math problem of the acreage not adding up is easily explained because there's so many tax parcels here acquired over a hundred years. And clearly, this wasn't such an issue that needed to be dialed up with acreage at the time. No one was pointing it out. Okay? I'm just going to let that down because I can't hold it up. I want to also point out that chapter, chapter ten, actually, the amendments in nineteen seventy were not initiated by the city commission. It was actually a citizen initiative. And the city commissioners at the time didn't like it. So it was suggested earlier that this was brought forward by the city commissioners. Not at all. Jack Caldwell, a local attorney, kind of led the charge on that one. And the parks, now we have chapter ten. Commissioners were against it. So, but the actual language of chapter ten, it uses designate a handful of times. I've got five times that I've circled. And it doesn't just use designate in the context of an ordinance. It also uses designate in the context of a charter amendment. It uses designate specifically here where it's itemizing a couple of parks that were specifically designated and in other manners may be designated. It does not say shall be designated by ordinance. It's well established in the law that if you use the word may, that is a permissive use. There are other ways, other than just by ordinance, of creating parks. And in fact, that's been done in Oregon City over the years. Singer Creek Park, for example, was made a park by majority vote, wasn't actually part of a specific ordinance. Same is true of other parks, but I'm not here to present on that right now. But the point is, if you require that an ordinance must happen, a specific ordinance for every park, pretty soon, we're going to end up with a bunch of parks that people have assumed and thought were protected for a long time are actually not protected. Also, I want to point out that since you're looking at the past actions of commissioners, you have to look at the legislative history as it exists up to the point of those decisions. So up to the nineteen ninety one for the nineteen ninety one Parks Master Plan to nineteen ninety nine for the nineteen ninety nine Parks Master Plan and June two thousand and four for that plan. You don't look at things after the fact. For example, in the case of DeFazio versus Washington Public Power Supply System, which is two nine six OR five fifty, Supreme Court announced that the views legislators have of existing law may shed light on new enactments, but they are of no weight in interpreting a law enacted by their predecessors and subsequent statements where legislators are not probative of the intent of statutes already in effect. So those are fancy ways of saying you need to look at what actually happened on the ground and what the record says and not what people recall saying after the fact or think was going on.
Well, let's be clear here, okay? This is not the state legislature. This is the Oregon City Commission. We're the oldest formed body west of the Mississippi River. And we have wide latitude to interpret our own ordinances, plans and other sorts of things. So, you know.
That's true.
However. Spouting, you know, ORSs at me isn't going to do any good.
Well, the rules of interpretation still apply at this context. I think Mr. Kibizman would agree. And your interpretation still has to be consistent with the plain meaning of the code in this point, the charter. And saying that there must be a specific ordinance for designating a park is against the plain language of that charter. Also, the quotes that were picked and put in the PowerPoint presentation from the two thousand and four city commission regarding the fact that they wanted to go back in December and amend things were not in the context of a Parks discussion at all. They were general comments. I don't think anyone's been able to find any references to Waterboard Park in the two thousand and four comp plan amendment text. That's part of the issue here, going off of maps, not explanations. So to extrapolate from a general statement that we're going to amend this comprehensive plan doesn't mean that once adopted, the comprehensive plan isn't legally binding. It wasn't a draft. It was formally adopted. Also, just want to clarify that nobody at the neighborhood ever said that staff was messing with maps. It was simply pointed out that the timing was interesting and that two thousand and four, the Public Works Master Plan was undergoing some changes. And if you look at the notes from DECA Architecture, meeting with city staff around that time, which were provided six weeks ago, in fact, the Public Works Department was looking at different sites, a handful of different sites, I think five to seven, prior to that June two thousand and four adoption. There was no mention in those notes of Public Works. It was only after that June two thousand and four map was adopted that the other ideas were scrapped and that Public Works was the sole option. So that doesn't suggest anyone was messing with anything. It simply suggests that there was a changing of trajectory after June two thousand and Also, it was stated that, Mayor, you asked if the two thousand and four comp plan map was the first time that the comp plan showed green in lower Waterboard Park. That's not true. The nineteen seventy five comprehensive plan map also did, which we presented in August. Can you bring that with me?
Was there an intervening plan between seventy six and two thousand and four?
Nineteen eighty.
We can go look real quick.
I'd like to know what the eighty one says.
I think.
If I recall right, the seventy five map colored green, but was parks or institutional? It wasn't specific parks?
That's correct. Parks or schools, I believe.
Parks.
Parks or schools.
Yeah.
Also, I submitted this evening, and of course, you haven't had a chance to review them. I don't think they're strictly relevant to the legal question that's before you, but since so much information was presented on the history of Waterboard Park, I included them. There are city commission minutes from nineteen forty one to nineteen seventy two, not all of them, just the ones that talk about Waterboard Park, specifically lower Waterboard Park and the Armory and the large building area. Those minutes reflect that thirty plus years of city commissioners talked about lower Waterboard Park as Waterboard Park. When they're talking about leasing the Armory and building the Armory and selling the property to the state, building other buildings, other uses up there, it's conversation. It's in Waterboard Park and that's what those minutes reflect. So that helps with the general understanding, the popular understanding of whether that was Waterboard Park.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
James Nacida, I live in Oregon City. I just want to point out two things. What I'm passing around today, I pass it out to highlight the history of the original purchase and make a suggestion. As Mr. Lewis pointed out, it was the Board of Water Commissioners that purchased the property in nineteen ten. According to the article that I have highlighted and then blown up on the second page, it reflects, it's a report of what the Board of Water Commissioners had planned for that purchase. They included, one, a reservoir. There was a reservation of a couple feet or, I think, a couple hundred feet from Center Street for a rock quarry by the individual who sold the property. And third was a park. And third was a park. So the intent for purchase as a park goes all the way back to the original purchase. The reservoir went up to Mountain View, as we know. After 15 years, the reservation for a rock quarry expired, so that left the only original intent as a park. And, as you know, the purchase was from Center Street all the way up to Hill. I do have, this was not in the presentation, and I don't know if they would still exist, but I think it's important. The Board of Water Commissioners, like South Fork Waterboard now, is a different corporate body. It made its own ordinances, it had its own resolution, it had its own management. And as Mr. Lewis pointed out, it was subsumed, all the liabilities, obligation, and rights were subsumed in the city in the 1923 charter. I think it would be a good idea, and I think it's important, that the commission look at the resolution and/or ordinance that the Board of Water Commissioners adopted to purchase the park. Because if it was an ordinance, there might be some legal implications today because they assumed all the responsibilities of the Board of Water Commissioners in 1923. The commission would probably still be bound by that. So I think that's something that's rather critical, that you look at. So that's the one point I had. The second point is this. Mr. Lewis did not raise with you the Trails Master Plan, which I raised with you several weeks ago, which very clearly showed detailed attention and planning for Waterboard Park, down to both trails within the park, including, and that went to Center Street also, and around the park as well. So I respectfully suggest that Water Park was considered in detail as a park in the Trails Master Plan. And I think just the common sense view of this is, they adopted the June 2004 Comp Plan with intention, because they were fulfilling the Trails Master Plan and the Parks Master Plan. Then they turned, they made a decision change in July to put Public Works there, so they intentionally changed it. But June of 2004 was not a mistake. It was intentionally done to implement the Trails Master Plan and the Parks Master Plan. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So is there any other public comments? Then let's take 10 minutes, and we'll come back, and we'll review this. Are we on? Okay. So it's up to the commission discussion at this point.
There was a request for additional time. You know, I just want to throw that in there for one additional, you know...
What?
The McLaughlin neighborhood did ask for additional time to respond. You certainly don't have to, I see no reason why you have to grant that, but I want to make sure...
Well, let's have the commission discussion first, and then we'll see what the sense of the commission is. I'm going to go last. So who wants to go first? Does anybody have any questions of either, of any of the folks that have talked tonight?
So I'll just make a few comments here. I'm a Parks guy. You know, I sat on the Parks and Recreation Committee for 10 years. And we brought in the Wesley Lynn property and made a park there. We brought in the park at Park Place. So I know Parks. So I don't want to think I'm being disingenuous about Parks, or park properties, or a new park, or whatever.
Mike, is it on?
There we go. Sorry. Well, there we go. And right now, to me, unless somebody can tell me something different, I don't see a smoking gun here that tells us that this is it, or this is it. And in that case, I kind of go towards what's going to be the highest and best use of that property. I have toured that, the Public Works facility. We do need a new facility. And I think it's in the best interest of the city. And keep in mind, I live in the McLaughlin neighborhood. I'm sensitive to this. But I also have to be sensitive to the city that put us in this position here. So that's how I would be leaning here, so...
Commissioner Mengerberg, you're the person with the least amount of experience on the commission, but probably, as a staffer on the municipal level and county level for a long time, probably have more experience with all of the planning, plans, and all that stuff. So what's your take?
First, I want to thank John Lewis for his very thorough presentation and great information about the history of the development and the land use. It was really helpful, and especially seeing the maps illustrated over time. I think that planning documents are designed to reflect the will of the community at the various times that they exist. And they're meant to be flexible over time to respond to changing needs and changing desires of the community. And so staff has really presented a compelling argument that the long-term use and intention of this space is for Public Works. And there hasn't been countervailing, compelling evidence that there's been the same level of interest and work and money and investigation and dedication to parks. And the line between where Waterboard Park is and where the Public Works facility is has been consistently clear. I mean, there's been a few instances, very few instances, where it might have shifted a little bit, but overall, it's been very clear that they're separate. So I would be leaning with Commissioner Shaw in support of having this be a Public Works facility versus Parks.
Commissioner Smith?
I have a question for Mr. Bus or Mr. Nacida.
Which one?
Either one.
Mr. Bus, why don't you come up, since you're representing the McLaughlin Neighborhood
You referenced minutes, you referenced minutes for a City Commission meeting in the past that talk about this in the context of a park. Is that in this document or in the documents that you've sent prior to that?
What I referenced, Commissioner, is actually a bunch of meeting notes from City Commission meetings from 1941 to 1972. So it's quite a few, actually. They're not in your printout here. They're in the electronic version that was submitted a couple hours ago. But I want to remind the commission, we were not sitting on this 71-page document. I prepared that this afternoon, only after I got the PowerPoint presentation, not knowing if we would have more time after today to submit things into the record in response. So this wasn't a ambush.
If there's commission meeting notes talking about these areas as Parks or park space from 1941 to 1972, I want to see them. And the reason that I think this is very important is because we had a similar situation when we found out that the school district did not own Barclay School. We didn't know that. And there is very easily, you know, there's chances that we missed it. And, you know, when we, if there's time periods where, you know, if it goes back to this date, and I understand this is not the City Commission's talking about it as a park, but if there's dates throughout here where City Commissions are talking about it as a park, it's a park. And if, you know, we talk about acquiring these different sections, but where does it say what we plan to use them for? You know, so there's references in these past notes somewhere to say, when we were given this land or various pieces, what our intention was, or what the City Commission's intention was in the past, where those places were. And if it says a park...
If I may, and this isn't, we're getting this information on the fly here, but if I may, just read real quick. A resolution of the City Commission, looks like March 26, 1947. The National Youth Administration has granted permission by the City Commission of Oregon City on April 2, 1941, to construct a building for their uses and needs, and primarily for the purpose of fabrication of buildings, commonly known as a prefabrication plant, in Waterboard Park. And whereas said building was constructed and used for approximately two years, 1945 School District, 62 of Oregon City, opened vocational educational school on said building by permission from the city. So it's talking about, you know, using, putting, in this instance, putting a building...
In the park.
...in what it's referring to, in general terms, as Waterboard Park. And you see, you know, other instances through here of so-called Waterboard Park. I'm not sure, unless Mr. Bus has an exact of someone referencing that, you know, this is now Waterboard Park. I think it was a reference in general location of where they were putting something.
That's a good example of generally how it's represented.
Commissioner Smith?
Yeah.
So I'm just trying to get some clarity. You said if it's been mentioned as a park, it's a park.
I don't think we have to designate a park to make it a park in the public's mind. If there's a period of time, over three, four decades, of people referring it as a park, specific places that they're talking about, I think that's a problem. Just the same way, I think it's a problem that we forgot, as a city, that we owned Barclay School. I mean, it is not the first time it's happened, so it's possible that we didn't know it was a park. I mean, it really is possible.
And I think what we saw in records, there was misconception of really where these boundaries are. They just think of that area as Waterboard, I mean, they talk, the park, you know, so...
We talk school.
Well, if we wanted to use another...
That doesn't make it...
If we wanted to use another example, the area commonly known as Kelly Field...
Right.
...also included that whole piece of land that the lawnmower shop and all that stuff sat on. That was commonly known as Kelly Field, even though it wasn't part of the city property.
I understand that.
And I think in this case, you do have a pretty good explanation of what was considered Waterboard Park in 1970, when the citizens adopted that charter defining what Waterboard Park would be.
Is that all for you, Mr. Smith?
For now.
For now? Commissioner Paul?
So I just, I want to thank everybody for all their work on this. And our citizens are clearly passionate about our parks. And we're passionate about other things, too. Our safety of our roads, the speed, and where Public Works is going to be. I want to make sure that we keep our boundaries defined, and we're really not talking about this in the context of Public Works, but really about...
Actually, you guys are the only ones that are doing that.
Park.
Doing what?
All of the rest of the commissions, the only people that are actually doing that.
Doing what? I'm confused.
Referring to this discussion as part of Public Works. I haven't done that. Commissioner Shaw did that tonight. You did that tonight?
Well, I think it's...
I was just saying not to, so I...
I know, but we've already had commissioners tonight say that it's a better use for Public Works than it is a park. That's not the issue we're talking about tonight.
And that's what I just said.
Okay. I'm just pointing out that it's already been done.
Okay. So back to Barclay School. That was found in writing, and documents were found. So I'd like to see it, I'd like to see it in writing. We do have it in writing in our charter, not a map, actually, in writings as well. And so if it was designated a park, I'd like to see that in writing, not a map, the actual in writing where it was voted on and passed, not just discussion. So we do have it in writing in the charter since 1970, written in. And that's what I tend to go by, is what's in writing, what's in our charter, not just what was discussed, or what was on a map that has changed throughout the years. As Commissioner Mengerberg mentioned, those plans change. They're meant to change. They're meant to be flexible at the times. They're a guide. You can look at comp plans that we have right now. They've changed, so...
Go ahead.
So just one point of writing in that 1991 plan, they talk about, and this is something that my staff just pointed out to me, it's something I forgot to mention, but the written summary that was prepared for each of the parks notes that Waterboard Park is a park in name only due to lack of facilities. This is in the 1991 plan. If it had included the Armory and all the Public Works buildings, that was about 20,000 square feet of buildings that should have been suggested. So again, it's another kind of indication where I think pretty clear definition of what wasn't part of a Waterboard Park. There may be other written, but we didn't find written, adopted kind of language that suggested anything different than the charter.
Anything else?
That's it.
Anybody else? Okay. So I wanted to make sure that my own personal opinion wasn't modifying anything anybody else wanted to say. It's clear to me, from the presentations of the Public Works and GIS Department, through my own experience, going back more than 25 years in the city, in fact, way more than that, actually, 40-some years in the city, and the personal experience. I mean, I have, we had the wake for my best friend at the Armory back in 1978, and those buildings are virtually unchanged from that period of time. This facility has been used for more than 80 years, both the upper and lower yards, as a government facility of some kind. If this were to go to a court, I believe that a court would say that, given the long history of use, that no matter what some map says, that this has been a public facility. If there were some real intention to move Public Works, any time in that 80-some-year history, there would have been some indication in budgets or in other kinds of documentation that said, "Well, we're going to move Public Works, so we're going to designate this area as a park." Again, I think Commissioner President Pauli is correct in that there is no, there is nothing in the record anywhere that, other than the land described in the charter, to describe Waterboard Park. And, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Lewis, but the way it is written in the charter, it does not include the upper and lower yards. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So we have an actual written definition of what Waterboard Park consists of.
We do.
And given that the very long history does not include the upper and lower yard as Waterboard Park, but in fact, has been used as Public Works facilities of some kind or another for all of that time, I don't see any compelling reason that we should... I guess we're interpreting the term designated as a park. And I say that designated a park means just that. It's written down. The boundaries are laid out clearly. And beyond that, I think a color on a map is not clearly designating anything. And we can see that over time on all of these maps, as things change, because these maps do change. As different commissions come in, as different planning commissions come in... commissions come in, as different planning commissions come in, there's been literally hundreds of hundreds of people who have worked on this stuff since, you know, the early 20s. And, and things do change. I haven't heard or seen anything that would, that would sway me to believe, other than the fact that there are people in McLaughlin neighborhood who don't want to have the Public Works facility located where it is, that we should, that we should change the use of that property just because of a couple of maps. So that's where I'm at. Commissioner Smith?
If this entire commission can say they can make a decision tonight based on all the material that they've read, then they can do that. I haven't had a chance to look all over this.
I have a question for Scott. So which, what parks in Oregon City are charter parks? Charter parks are protected by our charters. Thank you. It's been a long night. Waterboard Park, tell me a little bit about that. As far as a charter park, and not a charter park, and how that's written.
So, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna lean a little bit over on Bill, and just feel free to jump in, Bill, but I, because some of this is interpretive, and that's kind of where, I guess it's fallen back on you, but are you asking me for where's the list that's listed in the charter of the park sites? Is that, is that what the question is, just to be clear?
I'm specifically asking about Waterboard Park as far as how it's listed, as a charter park, not a charter park.
I think Mr. Lewis did include that in the comments, right?
I can answer that. Waterboard Park is listed in the charter as described in.
The boundaries is what the question is, right?
In the boundaries from 1970, from, on the, in the charter.
In the charter. What I've listed is specific to Waterboard Park. There's also several other areas that are listed in the charter as charter protected. And I can give you the blocks, but I can't tell you the names, because they're listed in the charter. So Block 40, for instance, or Block 96, Block 102, Block 152. I don't know the names of those parks based on that, but Martin does. Thank you, Martin.
But those areas are protected. And I'm just kind of referring to a comment that was made about how there's lots of parks and, or places in Oregon City that are considered parks that then wouldn't be protected, but if they are chartered, written as charter parks, then they are protected.
And the full list are the blocks that they named, Clackamas Park, Atkinson Park, Rivercrest Park, and to the extent the same zone by Oregon City, an area around Lynn Avenue, the city land acquired at Fourth and Blanchard, in the Platteck, Kanema, Kelly Field, Block 126. Those are the specific charter parks. And there's some additional ones like the John Storm Park that you saw.
That were John Lewis's presentation.
That were subsequently adopted, yeah.
So when, when, so Wesley Lynn was officially adopted as a park, correct? By ordinance?
I'm not positive on that. In fact, I think John laid out that, that issue, that the city has been inconsistent over its history of officially adopting a park versus just knowing that we've acquired it for park purposes. So I'd have to do a quick bit of research. I could answer that question if you.
What about Filbert Run, or whatever this, this new park is that we're planning? Have we adopted that as a park by ordinance?
No, not yet.
So that's not a charter park.
So it'd be, it would be anticipated that.
Chapin Park.
As those are developed.
Was that adopted as, I mean, I saw something about.
Can I read the list Martin gave me, just so that I can go through comprehensively? So Block 40 is the McLaughlin House. Block 96 is Barclay Park. Block 102 is the Carnegie Center. Block 152 is the swimming pool. Waterboard Park, Clackamas Park, Atkinson Park, Rivercrest Park. This is an interesting one. The triangular area, Lynn and Sharman, which we don't own.
Which is technically not, it's privately owned.
It's privately owned. Land acquired from the Oregon City School District at Fourth and Blanchard, Kanema Children's Park, that's, so that's one. Kelly Field, Block 126, which is the end of the Oregon Trail. And then Martin tells me there's two more, but we don't recall which they were.
John Storm and the other one.
John Storm and.
Todd's, Todd's pardon?
Mr. Nacita indicated Abernathy Creek. I have no reason to doubt that.
Yes, I'm aware of Abernathy Creek.
14 of them. And I can remember, Chapin wasn't listed.
Just to add one more element to this, Section 43 talks about additional parks and says they can be designated by ordinance if the city acquires it. But it also says additional parks may be created and land established as parks upon the acceptance by the commission of a gift to the city for park purposes or dedication of land as a park. So some of those parks may not have an ordinance, but if they were dedicated to the city or gifted to the city for use as a park, they acquire charter status upon the city's accepting them.
Okay, so we know that for these?
Certainly for the ones that we've already identified, those are charter parks, no question.
No.
And there's boundaries specified for those charter parks?
Well, Block 190, Block 96, so yeah, that's, got it.
Mm-hmm.
So my, my question is, and this is something that, you know, going forward, we're going to have to fix, because I would certainly want Chapin and Wesley Lynn and Filbert Run, those things should be protected under Chapter 10. So we need to have a process, a procedure to bring those things to the commission, have them officially adopted as, you know, by ordinance, and have them inserted in the charter, so that we know what's going on. But I think, on the other hand, it's clear that this area has never been used for anything other than the Public Works facility, at least in anyone in this room's lifetime.
But was that property given to us for a purpose other than?
We purchased it, and it was not for park use.
Even the county.
No, no, no.
To be clear, that gifting applied prospectively. And so, you know, the fact that we acquired it, it might have been gifted to the city as a park, didn't necessarily give it park status later. If the city was gifted a park, did something else with it, wasn't used as a park, 1970 charter protections going into place, the fact that it was gifted in the past, it had already changed use.
So.
Actually, when we purchased that, I think there was also like a 15-year provision that they could quarry rock off the site, in addition to the Waterboard Park uses. So we found that, and we did review. I know it was suggested that we maybe hadn't, but that 1910 land sale, you know, deed that provides all the description that we used, does talk about that use. So it wasn't intended for.
We're done taking public testimony. We're gonna work this out. This is the same kind of situation as, you know, there's a big forested lot across the street from a, from a housing subdivision that's been there for 50 years, and then the kids go across and play on, and people, you know, run their dogs, and all of a sudden, and then everybody just assumes that it's public stuff. And then one day, the guy who actually owns it decides he's gonna develop it. And there's the big hue and cry, but the fact is, it was never public land. It was never, it was never a park. It was just, you know, he didn't care about people running around on it. And this is kind of the opposite of that. The fact is, is we've been using it as Public Works for so many years, and there is no, there is nothing in the record that clearly designates the area of the upper yard and the lower yard as anything other than the uses that we've been using it for, for the last 80-some years.
Have you read the entire record?
As far as I'm concerned, you know, we could go back to 1844, but that really doesn't change the fact that things change over time. And in 1970, the voters of Oregon City designated Waterboard Park as to what it was when they had that vote. And it did not include the upper and lower yard.
And, and that's a big thing for me. The voters voted, and it's been that way since 1970. So I go back to the charter.
So, is there any other discussion?
I will not vote.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion.
All right, I'll vote no.
Okay.
So, I guess, you know, we had originally written this resolution before a lot of this discussion and new evidence and additional information came forward. Commission tonight has brought up some good arguments and points that they've made with their own words. You know, would you like to vote and have us come back with a resolution that incorporates some of what we heard from your conversations tonight to amend that resolution, or are you comfortable with the way the resolution is written?
Can you be a little more specific with what might be changed or added?
So, for example, talking about the idea that planning documents are more flexible, that there is no real intent to move Public Works in any of the document that you've heard. To be designated means a specific identified park. There's no text description in the.
Charter park.
Charter park, yeah. No text description in any of the plans of Waterboard Park. The, and there are a few other notes that I've captured from, from the discussion. You know, what, what we have now is what, you know, we drafted six weeks ago, saying, here's what we think. But, you know, here in the discussion tonight, there's some additional things that you have said, that, you know, are some very valid points that, to the extent this is challenged at some point, may be useful to incorporate.
So if we decide that, would we have a continuance of this?
What I would, what I would suggest, and what Turner was suggesting, was that you make a preliminary decision. Yes, we find that it was, it, that the upper and lower yard were never designated as a park, and bring back a resolution reflecting our discussion tonight. So you'd have a decision, it'd just be formalized at the next meeting.
Okay.
Hate to kick it over one more period, because it's been in front of you so long, but we want to make sure we capture what you guys are talking about.
Okay.
And beyond standard operating procedure, we can't, in order to fully place a procedure in the charter, we would have to do a charter amendment.
Yes, you'd have to send it to the voters.
But by ordinance, we could say that from now on, in order for, you know, a park must have an ordinance or some other, you know, official documentation in the record. And by that, it would be placed under Section 10 of the charter.
Yeah, you have, you have that in your charter right now. It's got to be gifted or dedicated to the property, and that's going to be documented, or you must have an ordinance adopting it as, as a park. What you might do is, you know, direct staff to bring back to you a list of those parks that, where we have that, and the additional parks that we think we might include, and have you review that, and maybe run it through PrAC, or however.
Well, I think it's clear that if we haven't done that with Wesley Lynn and Filbert Run and whatever else we've done.
We could build Public Works there.
Huh? What? Filbert Run? Yeah, that's a great idea. Right, right across the street from the bus barns. So I think, you know, Mr. Archer, you have a little work to do there, as far as, you know, getting that together, so we can officially, you know, get these things designated and, you know, protected. Because I believe in the protections. I mean, I was the guy who was saying that, you know, the Indy-Dorian Trail Interpretive Center didn't meet Chapter 10 of the parks. And of course, you know, we saw what happened there. And I don't believe that the coffee shop that was down there for four or five years met the intention under Chapter 10 either. So.
Mr. Mayor, and just one clarification on that.
Yes.
Point about the, the parks that may not have been officially designated over time. Some have and some have not. The, there's, there are a number of our park sites, some of those, most of those that you just kind of rattled off there, I know you were just doing that for discussion purposes. But just to make the point, even though that some of them haven't been officially adopted, they were purchased or acquired with funding that is dedicated by, either by state law, or by local law, or by a granting source that we received, may only be used for park purposes. So we've got a certain amount of protection.
I get that, but if we establish a procedure that says we're going to do it this way, even if somebody gives us five acres and says it has to be a park and it's included in the deed, then we have a procedure whereby it's easy to go back and go, okay, this is.
And I, and I agree, and I understand that. I'm agreeing that that's a good thing for us to do. I just wanted to mention that.
Sure.
In the meantime, just, just so you know, that, for, I guess, for sort of understanding that, why, you know, we feel okay about it for now, but we will certainly bring that back. That's, no question, that's a good idea to do that, but.
Okay, so I guess the motion would need to sound something like we would preliminarily approve the, the resolution with amendments.
I guess what I'd ask is, the motion be that the commission find that the upper and lower public work yards have not been designated as a park, and direct staff to bring back a resolution to that effect incorporating the discussion that occurred this evening.
Can we just say so moved?
Yes, you can.
Absolutely.
So moved?
No.
I think she said so moved.
Okay, so moved by Commissioner Mengeberg, seconded by Commissioner Shaw. Is there any further discussion? Then call the roll, please.
Commissioner Shaw?
Aye.
Commissioner Polly?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
No.
Commissioner Mengeberg?
Aye.
Mayor Holliday?
Aye.
Thank you for that 30 minutes.
So, from parks to marijuana. This one is ordinance 15-1017, an ordinance of the City of Oregon City declaring a ban on medical marijuana processing sites and dispensaries, recreational marijuana producers, processors, wholesalers, and retails, referring this ordinance to the voters of Oregon City and declaring an emergency. Mr. Conkell.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. As your, many of you are aware, we've amended the Oregon City business license requirements that indicate we will only approve a business that is legal at the local, state, and federal level. Obviously marijuana is still a banned substance at the federal level, therefore we have not issued any business license related to medical or recreational marijuana in the city limits of Oregon City. That is being challenged in Cave Junction, so there is possibility that that interpretation and requirement could be overturned. It could continue to stand. It's an unknown right at this moment. The voters of the state of Oregon passed Measure 91, allowing recreational marijuana wholesaling, retail sales to become legal in the state of Oregon. Through that, House Bill 3400 provided an opportunity for local jurisdictions to put this question before the local voters, if they determined that it was something they'd like to pursue in their community. Because the measure, the no votes were less than 55% in Clackamas County, we cannot automatically just pass an ordinance and put this moratorium in effect. The method that's available to us, because the vote in Oregon City was 52.4 in favor of Measure 91 and 47.6% against, is that we pass this, this ordinance tonight, putting a moratorium on recreational marijuana-associated sales, wholesaling, and then we are required to put it before the voters in November of 2016. So it is open for discussion with the commission of what they'd like to do. We do have to have this completed by, I believe it's December 22nd.
24th.
24th, in order to use this provision afforded to us in House Bill 3400.
So this does not, when you say, we say medical marijuana processing sites, does that include grow sites? Because I know there are several medical marijuana grow sites that have been operating inside the city limits legally for a while.
As I understand it, what this, adopting this resolution and providing this notice to the OLCC and OHA would prevent, both of those agencies would not issue any license, licenses for marijuana. As I understand, the Medical Marijuana Act, you don't need a license from the OHA to have a grow currently. That may change at some point in the future.
But there is some kind of registration or something.
I, I think that's right, but I don't think there's, there's a license. So, you know, as I understand it, it doesn't. it, it doesn't...
Mr. Ban, Chief Ban?
So, one of the things that's going on right now is OLCC has been going around the state and having conversations with people because ultimately, they're going to be the ones controlling the system. Right now, they're coming up with what the system's going to look like and...
Well, yeah, okay, hold on, let me stop you there because I'm only concerned about the folks that are here inside the city limits growing now for medical marijuana patients.
And they're not registered with us.
They're not registered with you, but they have to be registered with somebody because at some point, if you discover one of those operations, you do some kind of investigation, right?
Well, right now, no. There's no requirement that I'm aware of right now that they have to register with us.
So, if somebody reports a marijuana grow...
Well, okay, I understand your question, Mayor. Yes, if...so, if we get report...any kind of report like that, in the same way that if we get...if we come into contact with somebody who has marijuana and they say, I'm a...I've got a medical marijuana card, we can check per the Medical Marijuana Act, they've got a database, and see who those registered growers are. For example, there's one in Kenema that we got notified about, went and checked in with them, they had all their paperwork, checked it, everything was above board.
All right, that's all...I was just concerned that we weren't going to...that with this, we weren't going to put somebody who's been doing this under the legal system as it sits right now, we weren't going to put them at jeopardy.
The way House Bill 3400 that authorizes this temporary ban while it goes to the voters are, it's not going to affect people who are currently operating, and the only ones that are currently operating in Oregon City would be the marijuana...medical marijuana grow sites because they don't need a license from the OHA and, you know, it's just the way that system has worked. Some people call them...
And they don't need a business license.
Right, because they are...
They are prohibited from making a profit.
Correct. Theoretically, yes.
Yes.
So, this would not affect that situation?
Okay, all right, that's all I was...
And I want to clarify, you were just asking me about medical marijuana, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Because even still currently, well, I guess currently, grow sites...recreational grow sites are allowed now, right?
Recreational grow sites are not currently allowed. Medical marijuana dispensaries are authorized to sell recreationally as of October 1st. But we don't have any medical marijuana dispensaries in Oregon City, so it's not something we've...that Oregon City's had to do.
No, but commercial marijuana grow sites are legal now.
Recreational marijuana grow sites are not legal. What is legal is the medical marijuana grow and what you have is something known as card stacking. So, as a medical marijuana patient, you're entitled to have...grow a certain amount of marijuana. You can also have a caretaker...caregiver who grows that marijuana for you, and a caregiver can grow marijuana for multiple people. If I recall right, each marijuana patient can have up to four plants, and so you have a caregiver who's growing for 10 people, you've got 40 marijuana plants. So, that's where you get the...what can be large grow sites under the medical marijuana program that is nominally...so, it's not commercial in that they go to...
I know, okay, so, we're probably getting off topic here, so...
Just tell you one date that will change. So, January 4th or something like that in 2016 is when they are going to start issuing licenses to people to grow recreational marijuana.
So, where's the...
Start accepting applications.
And this is completely off topic, but I got to ask the question. So, where is the recreational marijuana coming from that is being sold in the...
Surplus medical marijuana. So...
Surplus drugs?
As I mentioned, each medical marijuana patient can have up to four plants. Four plants can produce a lot of marijuana.
So, where were we before we went down this winding road?
I was done with my presentation and you...Commission, we're going to discuss what you'd like to do.
So, at the end of the day, the reason we're declaring an emergency is because we have to get this done with enough time to be...have it be on the ballot in March. Is that correct?
Correct, and if we would have gone our typical one reading tonight, second reading two weeks, 30 days to go in effect, we're getting a little closer to my comfort level to that December 24th date.
Okay. So, this is just giving the folks an opportunity to vote, right?
Right, so, if we don't do this, pass this resolution or this step, then, starting in January, people could be applying for licenses and growing marijuana.
It would be denying them a business license because it's not legal at the federal level.
Okay.
But there's also the possibility that the current suit...is it Supreme Court?
Court of Appeals.
Court of Appeals could...Court of Appeals could go the other way and say that, you know, because Oregon law and, you know, there's a whole bunch of stuff that the Federal Drug Administration has put out and that the Justice Department have put out that makes an argument that says that, you know, theoretically, we should issue business licenses. So, it's kind of all over the map. So, if that court case were to go against that city, then our ordinance would be invalid and we'd have no control whatsoever. So, we're just giving the people of Oregon City the opportunity to say whether they want to have, you know, marijuana grow sites and dispensaries and recreational businesses in city limits.
In the city limits, in the context of the city.
Right.
Where before, you were talking about the vote and it wasn't in the context of the city. So, this is to make it clear the context of the city.
Yeah, this is just...what this does is say, OLCC, OHA, don't issue any licenses. We're going to vote...send this to a vote of the people in November of 2016 and, you know...
Is it November of 2016? Does it have to be the general election?
Yes, it has to be a statewide general election the next one is.
Okay, all right.
And so, if there were a change at the federal level in the future, then this would be invalid.
Not this, but our...currently, the city is not issuing business licenses for marijuana operations because they violate federal law. If federal law were to change and make it legal, some of these programs legal, then we would, you know, we wouldn't have a reason not to grant business licenses.
But with this ordinance, we will have a reason. It will still stand.
This ordinance, yeah, we move away from the business license and we say, we're...under House Bill 3400, we can ban it until we have that election in 2016.
So, this is really temporary?
It is. If the voter...what this is, is a ban up until 2000...November 2016. If the voters approve the resolution, the ban continues and no marijuana activity in Oregon City other than the medical, but that gets complicated. If the voters say, no, we want to have marijuana activity, we still have our business license ordinance that may or may not come into effect, and how that plays out politically is something we'd have to revisit.
Yeah, and one thing we will be coming back with you as another safeguard is, let's say, federal law changes or the court case says you can't deny a business license and the voters approve it, you know, we'll be coming back to you with recommended language on time, place, and manner as a safeguard so that we don't get into a condition where we don't have something on the books should all three of those happen.
Because, to be honest, I'm ambivalent on the issue. If the voters in November of 2016 say...in Oregon City say they want to do it, then that's what the voters say. So, we need to have time, place, and manner, 1,000 feet from a school, all those different kinds of things that you have to have in place.
Well, and if the voters say they do want it, then there is potential revenue to be had from the licensing of it, right?
Yeah, we currently have a marijuana tax in place that exceeds what House Bill 3400 allows, and, you know, hopefully, we're not a guinea pig about that, but certainly, one of the things we could do is...
Yeah, thank you, Rocky.
...in place, something consistent with House Bill 3400.
That would have to...because we're declaring this, we would have to come back at another general election for the 3% tax allowed by 3400 and send that to the voters. So, there would be a lapse potentially in there.
So, we couldn't make that as part of the ballot measure?
Possibly. We'd have to take a look at 3400 and maybe two measures, but we'll take a look at whether we can include that as the...in the language.
You mean of this language?
No, not the language you're adopting tonight, which is a ban. This is not sending anything to a vote. What we're doing is, we're saying, we're banning these things and we intend to send this to the voters. We have until August of 2016. We're going to make sure that doesn't slip, but right now, it's just a ban and intend.
Okay. Is there any more discussion?
It's a complex topic, so, you know, and there's a lot of information that we gave you to absorb.
What's the pleasure of the commission?
I'm going to get your turn.
Okay, I think it's important that the voters get a chance to vote on this in the context of the city. So, I move to approve the first and second readings of ordinance 15-1017.
Second?
So, moved by Commissioner President Polly, seconded by Commissioner Mengeberg. Mr. Geibsmann?
Ordinance number 15-1017, an ordinance of the City of Oregon City declaring a ban on medical marijuana processing site, medical marijuana dispensaries, recreational marijuana producers, recreational marijuana processors, recreational marijuana wholesalers, and recreational marijuana retailers, referring this ordinance to the voters of Oregon City for their consideration and declaring an emergency.
So, do you have to read it twice or...
Typically, what we've done in the past is read and vote on one reading and then read again and vote on the second reading.
Okay, so, this is the roll call for the first reading.
Commissioner Shaw?
Aye.
Commissioner Polly?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Mengeberg?
Aye.
Mayor Holliday?
Aye.
So, Mr. Geibsmann, second reading.
Ordinance number 15-1017, an ordinance of the City of Oregon City declaring a ban on medical marijuana process site, medical marijuana dispensaries, recreational marijuana producers, recreational marijuana processors, recreational marijuana wholesalers, and recreational marijuana retailers, referring the ordinance to the voters of Oregon City for their consideration and declaring an emergency.
Call roll.
Commissioner Shaw?
Aye.
Commissioner Polly?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Mengeberg?
Aye.
Mayor Holliday?
Aye.
And just for the record, Bill, when you get done being an attorney, you can always read all those disclaimers at the end of a commercial. I did use my one talent once again. So, the next thing on the agenda, and I talked about it at the beginning of the meeting, in our work session last night, we came to some general criteria, policy directives for hiring the city manager. In order to get the recruitment document out on Monday, we needed to approve this tonight, but I wanted to make sure that the public had an opportunity, if they had seen it, to make any comments on that or to send any comments either to...actually, those comments should go directly to the HR Director, Jim Lefler, or you can make a comment to any of us up here. But understanding that by close of business Friday, that's going to be finalized because we're going to kick that announcement out on Monday. So, if there's anyone who wishes to comment on this, now would be the time to do so. Seeing none, is there any further discussion from the commission?
No.
Then I would entertain a motion for 15-615.
Move to approve 15-615, establish standards, criteria, policy directives for hiring the city manager.
Second. Call roll.
Commissioner Shaw?
Aye.
Commissioner Polly?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Mengeberg?
Aye.
Mayor Holliday?
Aye.
And I would...we will have that up on the city website. Ms. Ricks?
The position?
No, the document that we just approved.
Yes.
Okay. So, back to the agenda. Anybody want to pull anything off the consent agenda?
I had a question about that, the...on the 595, it says Howell's a new location. Does that...
Oh, I think it's just because it's an ownership change, I think.
Okay.
Hold the one down.
As an LLC, K and LBF LLC, VBA Howell's Restaurant Lounge, I think it changed owners. Is that what's going on?
Yes, that's correct.
Yeah, okay.
Good, thank you.
And the Beaver Creek Row, that's what used to be Gents. Yes?
This is a theater, I think.
It's a theater.
Yeah, it's a theater.
It's the theater.
Oh, Hilltop Nine.
Well, it's Hilltop Nine Theater, but it's owned by... Hmm, that's interesting.
Do we want to talk about that?
Can I maybe...with the last commission, I was asked this question by somebody who knows the mayor very well. Just so you know, with liquor licenses, the question came from Commissioner Mom, what happens if we do not approve this? And what do you do? And that was my question. When I was asked to start approving these things, what does this mean and how much should we do? Basically, if we deny, OLCC grants them a license anyways, but puts them on immediate probation just to make sure. So, it's...I don't want to call it an exercise in futility, but it kind of is.
Well, I guess...I guess my question is, and it just doesn't have anything to do with the Howell's location, but if this is actually going...is it currently going on at the theater now?
I think so. Yeah, I think it's been for some time. We approved it a couple...
There was that conversation back when this originally happened, I think I remember it.
The application shows that it is currently licensed by the OLCC, so this is a greater privilege, is what they're...
So, it's listed...so, currently, it's allowed for beer and wine, and now they're going to hard liquor?
It looks like...it says greater privilege and full on-premise sales, so that's...that would be the assumption I would make, but it isn't clear on the application document.
I have no idea for the reason I told you before.
How...how do they separate...I mean, you know, I guess I haven't been to a movie in a while, but how do they separate that out? Do they have a separate section in the theater?
I don't remember. I know when this came up, I was chief at the time, so it was fairly recent, but the guy from the Hilltop, the theater, was actually here and went into their...they have policies and I think a lot of locations are doing this now. Lots.
So...
There's a minimum or a maximum, I think I...I'm just...
Two-drink minimum.
Going off my memory. No, I think there's a maximum that you can only get a couple of drinks. They stop before...
So, you can only get two triples? Is that it?
Right.
But I'm shooting from the hip here, so if...Scott apparently goes.
Oh! Well, enlighten us, Mr. Archer.
I go to the local movie theater. I was just mentioning to Jim that they do have a system like an armband if you...and they check your ID and then they do something where they keep track of how many, you know, drinks you can be served or something to that effect.
They're governed by OLCC laws and they have to have a plan to prevent minors from consuming.
So, you can go to watch a Disney film and drink, right?
It's a bad movie, you can have three drinks.
All right, I think we've had enough of that. I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'd love to approve.
Bracket.
Call roll.
Commissioner Shaw?
Aye.
Commissioner Polly?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Mengeberg?
Aye.
Mayor Holliday?
Aye.
Mr. Manager, you have any communications?
Do, real quick. Pioneer Center Annual Fall Fundraiser, Holiday Reiths, Deadline to Smith for reith orders is November 20th. They also have Chinook Books, so please visit the Pioneer Community Center. In observance of Veterans Day, City Hall and city offices will be closed on...that's not right. November...
Wednesday, November 11th.
Wednesday, not Tuesday, Wednesday, November 11th. And then just the commission's aware, but the health advisory for the Cove has been lifted, so we will be removing those signs immediately. And I'll go ahead and have Mr. Lewis give an update and then call up Library Director Cole for the carne construction update.
So, thank you again. Real quickly, I just wanted to share this because it's related to our grant pursuit of grant funding, and I wanted to let you know that the Oregon's statewide transportation improvement program, STIP, that grant program's coming up, and this month, we will actually be submitting an application for the next five blocks of Main Street. Based on the criteria, the selection criteria, we looked at, you know, we've got several projects that we can pursue with grants now or have pursued with grants. So, we thought that our past efforts to pursue Main Street between 10th and 15th was the project that best kind of met their criteria...selection criteria. Very... competitive program. There's $11 million in the Act, the region Act 1, the new group that comprises the region for funding.
Eric, Commission on Transportation.
There you go, thank you. And so, very competitive. We're also, we're already seeing many more projects than what we can, what, what can be a fund. And that's just in Clackamas County, so we don't know what the rest of the region's gonna go after. So we're gonna do our best to do that. And I, Mayor, I'm not sure if you're going to the C4 meeting tomorrow night, but I'll be going to that. I'll be going to the C4 Metro Subcommittee meeting in the morning as well. But those, those projects, Clackamas County's starting to align those and share those with committee members. So I don't know if it'll show up tomorrow night. It's not on the agenda for tomorrow morning, C4 Metro Subcommittee. So just wanted you to know that that project's out there. And there's other projects that we'll probably pursue too, but we're trying to align our projects in a way that make the most sense for the criteria by which they select the projects.
What would they be doing? I mean, what would the grant funds be used for?
Grant funds would be used for everything from pedestrian enhancements. Most of those sidewalks don't have ADA improvements. There's lots of sidewalk damage along there. We'd be definitely looking to enhance the transit center as, to whatever degree we can in the space that we have within the existing right-of-way. Obviously pavement changes, new striping, those kinds of improvements. So it'd be similar to what we did in the other blocks. Probably, haven't talked to Jim yet, but probably electronic parking meters, that kind of, that kind of thing, so.
Thank you.
And then the other thing I wanted to mention was, just an update on our moratorium project. So we completed the one down on 12th Street, which we've since lifted the moratorium on. We've got a contract underway right now that's not going great. We're having some problems with that. Not necessarily problems with the contractor as much as problems with the existing conditions. So we're working through that. We're about a week behind, but we've definitely, we've already completed Madison Street, which is one of the main blocks there, and then 14th Street, and we're in the middle of Buchanan, so it's all kind of up in that area next, near the hospital. Tight streets. But project's going well. We think we've, we've got a really qualified contractor, so I just wanted to let you know that we're making good progress. But we're doing things a little differently than the original intent of the contract there. So we may have some cost overruns that we need to bring back to you. Or not, hopefully not. But that's it for me.
So I'll be very brief, since I'm gonna turn into a pumpkin soon. I'll just share a few pictures, not 140.
Are you suggesting I had 140?
It was fascinating.
We may have seen 140 library. Okay, kids.
So, I don't know if you've been by the library lately, but a lot has been going on. The slab got poured before it rained, which was awesome. And then it rained a little bit, and that helps cure it, so that was really good. And then it started pouring, and we don't care so much anymore as we used to. But, so, so now that the slab is poured, this, where Denise and Dave, our construction site manager, are standing, that's actually gonna be the entrance. So you can see how it's like just flat, which is perfect. It's gonna be flat all the way to the sidewalk on 6th. So that's just gonna be that really nice graded, you know, flat grade handicap entrance there. And now you also can go right into the back door of Carnegie. That's flat, too. So, you know, it used to be like, what, six steps down or whatever, and now it's just like straight out. So that's, that's pretty cool. So there's the back door that I was speaking of, and those are the beams that kind of outline the, where the opening into the Carnegie will be. So all that will be taken out. And then to the right, you can kind of see, if I could blow this up, I don't know how to do that, you can see there's like a line underneath the window coming straight down. And that's, the brick, of course, under the window will be taken out. And that's where more glass will be put in, so that creates those nice visual openings into that, into the reference, what is currently the reference room. And these are the steel beams that are propping up the, supporting the brick wall. These ones are the ones that go down to the basement. This is what the inside of the reference room looks like now. That's where those shelves, where those, you know, like the ones with the glass shelves used to be under the ladder, and so that's where those shelves used to be, which we still have, and we will reinstall at a different location. And that's a view from the basement, lots of welding going on. And that's up inside the building, looking towards Atkinson Church, towards 6th, with the scaffolding in place, which really gives it some form and shape and mass. You can kind of tell where it's gonna be. And we've got walls going up, and they've, they're going up fast. It's great. They've done a lot just since that was Tuesday, about noon, so they're doing a lot. And that's just the top of the scaffolding. That's 22 feet. It will go up to 31 feet.
Wow.
Yeah. So that's pretty cool, because it just really gives you an idea of the height. And that's just a view from 7th Street, kind of encompassing the whole thing. That's it.
So what's going to happen to the brick that comes out of those openings?
They will palate, save and palletize that word. And they will have it there to reuse if they need it. And then we can, if there's any leftover from the project, we can decide what to do with it.
Okay.
But they'll save it for that project for now.
Okay.
Yeah, that's it.
Great.
Great, thanks, Mo.
Very exciting.
Thank you, yes.
What was that, four slides? Not 40?
Don't worry, John, it's an occupational hazard, the role you're in. I can say with utmost confidence that you take about half the time that Nancy Crush hour did. Now, I'm not saying much, but. So that's it for the manager. Anybody have anything on the commission?
I do, super quick.
Okay.
Okay. So I just want to bring to attention how much work the planning department has done to be more customer-friendly. And, you know, Eric has done a lot of work with developer forums, that type of thing, taking input in. And then we had our new sign code that we adopted with a lot of public input. So as a citizen of Oregon City, I got to go through the process of the sign code of getting an A-frame permit. So I went through that process today. I had excellent customer service, and I encourage all the other businesses to go through the process. It's very easy. They have a new flyer, and they have a new form, which is very easy, and even has examples of a drawing that's required. So I just, I want to thank everybody in the planning department for helping make this transition easy for businesses, and thank the commission for voting a fee that we feel is reasonable and fair and not prohibitive for businesses to have the A-frame that they need. That's all.
Okay. So last Tuesday, I, I spoke to the Hillendale Laborers Association, that's Beaver Creek Co-op, right? Is that Hillendale?
No.
No?
Coffield?
Coffield, there you go, sorry. And basically just talked about the different things that are going on in the city and what you were looking forward to doing, answer a few questions. It was a good time, and it was fine. The only other things that I have done, we did have South Fork meeting last week, and just did some routine stuff for South Fork, and everything's going along smoothly at South Fork. So other than that, the one thing that I did get asked to mention is, Lamp Falls Media Center is doing a, a video card thing for, for service members that are overseas. So if there's a family in town that wants to send a, a video Christmas card, you can get ahold of WFMC. They'll let you use the green screen and put you in different places, and you can say Merry Christmas, Happy New Year to your, to your serviceman or woman overseas that way. So you can reach Melody Ashford at Lamp Falls Media Center. And other than that, oh, he said he didn't have anything.
You just went, you know-
Commissioner Shaw?
Well, this kind of includes you, because, you know, we did have our Oregon City Business Alliance meeting. And, I mean, there was-
That was good.
Almost all of us there. And I want to commend Eric for kind of putting that together, but we did get to have some input on how the industrial lands and the cooperation we're gonna have with the college up there and stuff, so that was a lot of fun. And then, just a matter of, we did, Tony and I were at CIC on Monday night, and one of the, I guess the highlights there is that we did introduce the Rob, Kurt, Robert Libkey sign idea that, where it's gonna go and stuff. So now it's gonna be kind of out into the neighborhoods and stuff, and the residents are gonna know about that. So that was kind of good. So, other than that, I just wish, I think John brought that up, about the historic digital parking meters and stuff. I wished we could go back to the old parking meters, John, instead of those-
Kiosks?
Kiosks. Is it, there must be some fancy, it's kind of a historic-looking digital meter we could go to that, because you still see people down there playing with those things, but another thought. Okay.
We'll drag you kicking and screaming.
Yeah.
We'll talk about that.
Okay, thank you.
We'll drag you kicking and screaming into 20th Century, yeah, Shaw.
It's after my pickleball match.
Okay, is there-